All right, welcome to tonight's Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees meeting. It's 6:00 PM and I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, moving on to item number three, review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any trustees who would like to? Sorry, I can't. I couldn't see. Any agenda who would like to revise the agenda for tonight's meeting? Seeing no hands, we'll move forward with tonight's agenda. Item number four, approve minutes for the Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting on May 24th. And item B, Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting, May 24, 2022. Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Andrew Walker Andrews. Second? Second by trustee Sherman. All in favor, indicate by raising your hand. All right, minute approved by all trustees present. Who's taking minutes? Are you Paul? Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to item number five, public comment. We have received public comment written and we have had access to it, so we have read the public comments. And this is for items on non-agenda items if you'd like to do public comments. If you come up first and last name, sign in on the board. You're limited to three minutes and we will give you a warning, we will cut you off too, so just remember that. And we ask that you keep privacy rights of others in mind as you do your public comments. So any public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and announcements. Number six, announcements from the superintendent.
Just one quick announcement this evening for trustees. We, as you know, we have the meeting on June 28th. That's our second board meeting in June. But in July typically, and I know there's quite a few new trustees on our board, typically in July, we move to one meeting. And Pat will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we set that meeting for July 19th. So it's the Tuesday between the other two Tuesdays. So normally, we'd have on the second and the fourth Tuesday, but we chose the one in the middle, so it'd be the third Tuesday of the month. So I hope that works for folks. If it does not work for you, just let us know. If we have a lot of you that can't make that meeting, we can reschedule it. But right now, we're scheduled for July 19th. That's all the announcements I have.
All right, 6B is Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. Okay, any questions from any of the trustees? None? All right. So now we're moving on to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. And it's a mechanism by which the board can vote on items we see routinely that do not typically require a lot of board discussion. Any trustee can ask that an item be taken off the consent agenda if they want to have a conversation about the item. It's regular routine items that we vote on. So we'll move forward to item 7A1, Approve Resolution 2023-1E, Authorizing the Sale or Disposal of Furniture Equipment and Other Undesirable Suitable Items. Do, oh, we don't. We just, a motion from an elementary trustee. Sorry, guys, I'm still training wheels. All right, second? Okay, moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Decker. All elementary trustees in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees in the meeting? Motion passed. Topic two, Approve Resolution 2023-1S, Authorizing the Sale or Disposal of Furniture Equipment and Other Undesirable or Unsuitable Items. Do you have a motion from any trustee on this action? Moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Walker Andrews. All in favor? Okay, unanimous to all trustees in attendance? All right, now we're on to item number eight, New Business Information and Action. Item A, Teaching and Learning, Topic, Approved Changes to the Paxton Dual Language Immersion Program. And I'll pass the mic over to Dr. Watson and we'll move from there. And, yeah.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity this evening. I just remind the board members, this is an elementary item, but obviously, we want all board members to participate in the discussion around this item. Just a couple of things before I get started. I have on with me virtually this evening Julie Robitaille, the principal at Paxton, and then Bea Caliva is our district attorney, just in case there's any board questions that she might be able to help with. A couple of things I want to mention, just thank the board for the opportunity to discuss this. This is a really important item to a lot of people and we know that, we understand that, and I'm thankful for the opportunity that we have this evening to discuss it. We do, as speaking from the administration, we appreciate the public comment that's come in, the parent feedback, the community feedback has been great around this item, so I know it's a topic of high interest. Let's see, I want to do a couple of things this evening before you have a chance to ask any questions you have of the administration. So just a reminder for our new trustees that typically how we handle these discussion, decision-type items is the administration provides a little bit of background and history. The board has an opportunity to ask any questions of the administration. I may refer any questions that come to me to other administrators on the call or in the room. And then after you have a chance to ask questions, there's typically a motion and the motion allows you to open sort of board discussion and allow for public comment before you vote. So that's kind of the process that we use on these items and we try to stick pretty closely to the same process for these decision-making items. So briefly, I have about three things to cover with you. Let's see, number one, just wanted to talk briefly about the history of the DLI program at Paxton. Julie's on the call and she's going to help us sort of explain how the model is currently being delivered. And she's also going to talk about the recommended changes to the model. I'll provide some rationale for the change and then we'll just open it up for any questions from the board. So briefly, and again, a lot of this information is in your packet, so I don't necessarily need to go through all this because you've had a chance to look it over, but the Paxton item starts on... Sorry about that. It starts on page forty... forty-eight. And there's the frequently asked questions, but there's also several attached documents. So the first document I'm going to reference is on page 55. Gives you just a little bit of history of the program over the years. It has gone through quite a few iterations and changes. I count a total of maybe four to five changes in the last nine years. And that's starting from the beginning when it was really sort of eased in. So it started for certain grade levels, there were certain tracks that were created. And so it has gone through quite a few iterations over the years. I won't go through all of those, but if you have questions about those, Julie can answer those. But I think one thing of important note is if you look at 1718, if I've got my years correctly, that seemed to be the first year where we were at K5, all kids involved in immersion. So in 1617, we were at K4, so you can see how it kind of worked up through the grade levels. And by 1718, all grade levels were involved in immersion. There was quite a few iterations of grouping. You can see in 1718, even though all kids were involved, they had a low Spanish-speaking group, an intermediate group, and an advanced group. As with any change, there, you know, there were concerns and issues around the grouping process. So by nineteen and twenty, you know, the staff was concerned about the grouping. So by 2021, they made a decision to do no more ability grouping. They also moved away from what they called the thirds model. And so the thirds model is they were getting immersion a third of their day and there was a lot of transitions related to that. So they moved to a model where they were getting immersion half of their instructional day. And then this year, I'm going to let Julie explain that in a second, but I do think what's important to note is the biggest shift happened, you know, when we went school-wide and then when we went to the option of making sure all kids were involved at some level. And then the other, I think the other big shift of note is that when we went away from the thirds model to this half model, it is a little bit misleading because when you think of half the instructional day, it's really, it's really in the subjects of science and social studies. I do want the board to note too, there was a, for a while, we were teaching math in Spanish, but when the new math curriculum came around, it was a little too much for our kiddos. So the staff moved away from teaching math in Spanish for the most part. So Julie, did I make any mistakes on that brief description of the history?
No, you did a great job, I think. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
The important thing to note is we have 21 classrooms. So the model in grades kindergarten, first, and second. We have two Spanish-speaking teachers partnered with two English-speaking teachers. Because the class sizes can be larger in the upper grades, we actually have two bilingual teachers at grades three, four, and now five, and only one English-speaking teacher. So at the upper grades, two teachers, English and Spanish, shared two classes. And then that third person is a bilingual teacher, keeping her same, in this case, her same group of kids all day, but teaching half the day in English and in theory, half the day in Spanish. So what's been really challenging is meeting the district standards for science, social studies, and math in Spanish. So as Dr. Watson said, as we've moved to this new board-adopted math curriculum, it is very discourse-based. And therefore, last year and then this year with our full year of implementation, we've just really struggled to meet the essence of what immersion should be, which is teaching math at the lower grades in Spanish. So we've been straying away from that 50/50 model and chipping away at it a little bit and it just became evident to us that if we could do such a better job meeting the needs of our students and meeting those content standards that the board has in English, if we were actually teaching those content areas in English. And I'll pause there and then I can explain the new model that we're proposing when you're ready.
Yeah, so thank you, Julie. I think as you think about the new model that we're proposing, the biggest shift in the model is that we're scaling back, moving away from immersion. So we would still have Spanish every day, every kid, but it would be taught as a separate subject. So we wouldn't be teaching science and social studies in Spanish, those would be taught in English. But we have another time during the day carved out for Spanish. And so that's probably the biggest shift in the proposal. But Julie, go ahead and describe the proposal a little bit.
Thank you. So we would, at the lower grades, kindergarten, first, and second, maintain those teacher teams, but the teachers would keep their own kids, their own homeroom essentially, and teach those core content areas in English. And then the kids would only switch for Spanish. Or if the Spanish-speaking teacher would, her kids would switch for science or social studies, which would be taught by the partner teacher in English. At the upper grades, we would still have a self-contained teacher, but that person would teach most of the day in English and then that Spanish as a second language, which we would make as immersive as possible and exciting and engaging and wonderful as possible. It would not be, you know, a slow, low process repeated every year. It would challenge kids to be at the level where they are currently and move them forward. With this new proposal, we also will be able to add win time, which is the what I need intervention and enrichment time that we have never been able to fit in our schedule at Paxton. And that will enable us to not only provide intervention for our struggling students who need a little more time in the core content areas, but it'll also give us that time to enrich and extend, especially in Spanish, for those kids who want to and who are capable of reaching a higher level of proficiency.
Okay, just a couple of more points and then we'll open it up for questions from the board. So one of the things I think that we've been asked quite a bit is the rationale behind this decision and why we're making this shift. I just want to point the board to a sheet that's in your packet on pages 58 and 59. This was a collective statement that was created from staff input. So we had a group of staff members working on this, on this issue for quite a few months. And one of the things we did at one of our exercises is we did a collaborative statement. The way this statement was created, we just asked a simple question, what are the artifacts that have unresolved conflict? What are the pieces of DLI that remain unresolved? And so the staff all recorded their thoughts and then what I did is I categorized them into those various groups that you see there. But those are staff words. I didn't add anything or take anything away, it's all words from the staff. Our staff group that we worked with started in the neighborhood of 23 and at one point, we had 27 staff members there, always open to any staff members that could come. Some dropped in, some left, but we tried to make sure it was inclusive. So I just want to highlight a couple of these for you. I don't want to go into a lot of detail here, but I do want to point out, I think, probably the most significant concerns that came from the staff. The first one that Julie already alluded to was the curriculum time and the required minutes. So in the middle of all this transition, we introduced new curriculum, ELA curriculum, math curriculum. With that new curriculum comes new expectations for minutes per day. In the current schedule, there's just really no flexibility for extra time. And then I want to point out one other piece of data that's in your packet on page 65 and I'll share my screen. Oh, Paul, you gotta let me share the screen. So this is sort of a scatter plot of the students at Paxton. Note the date on this. It was, this assessment of reading level was taken at the end of the school year. We have a similar assessment at every school. One of the things I think that our teachers were concerned about all along through the discussions were students in need of intervention specifically in the area of reading. So we haven't had a chance to talk about this as a board, but we all know the importance of early childhood literacy and being able to read on grade level by third grade. All of our teachers work really hard to provide interventions so that kids are on track to reading by third grade. The red boxes would represent the kids, and Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's two grade levels below reading level. The yellow boxes are one grade level below reading level. And the numbers in there are actual numbers of students. So using kindergarten as an example, you've got 75 students in kindergarten and you can see the numbers as they go across. So two really important factors I want to point out here. Number one, you can't separate the COVID effect from this data. So you're going to see similar data in a lot of our schools because of lost instructional time and the difficulties of getting these kids caught up. I do want to make that really clear. The other thing I wanted to point out here is that I think, and we heard this from the teachers, while we didn't actually pull this data till May 24th, we heard this from the teachers throughout our discussion, this significant concern about intervention. So as a teacher or a principal, if you looked at this data, you would say to yourself, we need to do everything we can regarding intervention with those kiddos in the red box and the yellow box, because if we don't do something by third grade, they're not going to be reading at grade level by third grade. So I know that came across in the teachers' minds. The teachers look at this data throughout the entire year and they recognize those kids at those lower levels that needed extra intervention time. So when we talk about lack of flexibility in the schedule, that's what we're talking about, is that there's no flexibility in the current model to provide extra intervention time for some of those kids that really need it. And it is, it is quite a high number of kids, especially at K1, 2. So now, obviously, it gets a little bit better at 4, 5, but the intervention focus for our staff on those K1, 2 are going to be critically important as those kids move up through the system. So I wanted to point that out. So when we talk about required minutes in curriculum, we're really talking about that lack of flexibility and the need for intervention next school year for those kids in the red and the yellow box. I also wanted to point out, a lot of times, we've talked recently about the urgency around this and the need for this. I think this graph does a good job explaining the urgency because these are actual kids in our system that will be showing up next fall. If we don't change something with the schedule, we're not going to have time for that intervention that's needed. So that's one piece that I wanted to share with you. You'll also see some mention of accessibility. And so now I'm back on that page 59. The last category was accessibility. So when Paxton went to a school-wide model, what we noticed is that it didn't work for all kids and there was some accessibility issues. So a school-wide model provides equality, right? We're providing the same thing for every kid, equal across the school, which is great. That's a good thing. The problem is that we know that all kids need something different. Some kids need more, some kids need less. So just providing an equal program for everybody doesn't get to the issue of equity. And you'll see that in this statement of accessibility. There's students in Paxton with various ability levels of Spanish. So you have some students that are really excelling in Spanish, some students are not. Now we're asking them to go to science, but we're going to teach you science in Spanish. So if you have really low Spanish abilities, now you've kind of lost some of the curriculum standards for science because we're teaching it to you in Spanish. So various abilities within the Spanish realm, kids have some better abilities in Spanish than others. We also have students, as you're well aware, in every school with learning disabilities and those are learning disabilities in reading and writing and speech and language. And you'll see this in the statement, the staff has gone to a point where, you know, they feel like they're not addressing those learning disabilities as good as they can because all of those kids are expected to go into a Spanish setting and learn science and social studies in Spanish. So the staff feels like there's a lack of access for support for those learning disabled students. And the other one that's a big concern with accessibility is access for new students. As new students come to Paxton, there is no remedial track for Spanish. So if they missed second and third grade because they weren't at Paxton, when they show up in the fourth grade in their neighborhood school, they're expected to go right into that, into that language. So that has been a difficulty as well and you see that a little bit in the accessibility model. The other thing I would just, if I can just point you to one other thing regarding accessibility, and that's from our strategic plan that the board approved in September, and it starts on page 103. And remember, when we were talking about the strategic plan, we talked a lot about the core values of our school district and we spent a lot of time in community listening sessions to arrive at our core values. And these core values are intended to stand the test of time, one of them being equity. I'd encourage you to read that on page 103. What does equity really mean for our district? What struck me in that one is providing the necessary supports and resources to meet the individual needs of our students. I would say that the current model as it's sitting now doesn't meet the equity model because we've got students, unfortunately, that are not getting the resources they need and the necessary supports. The other one is on page 104 and that's inclusion. Also, one of your core values, respect, embrace diversity where individuals feel a strong sense of belonging. We have students that don't feel like they belong at Paxton. We have students that we actually don't place at Paxton. One of the groups is our refugee students. Our refugee students that are brand-new to our community and brand-new to, in a lot of cases, brand-new to the English language, we don't place them at Paxton, so they're not included even though it is their neighborhood school. We also have a handful of special ed kids that we would recommend not go to Paxton because of the school-wide model. Now, last thing I'll say, I've heard questions about, you know, well, how many kids is that? You know, is it one kid? Is it 10 kids that don't get placed there? So I would ask the board to consider this, if we had 10 kids that can't go to their neighborhood school because of a program that we've implemented, a school-wide program, does that feel inclusive if it's 10? Maybe it's one special ed kid that can't go to their neighborhood school and one doesn't seem like very much. But we have a federal mandate to serve special ed kids in their neighborhood school because that's the least restrictive environment. So it only takes one kid that we have to say no to, that that's a violation of our federal mandate. So I encourage you to consider those. And I just want you to be aware of that, when you look at the language that came from the teachers, they were thinking about some of these issues because they work with these kids every day. Last thing I would say is, yes, the process is not as clean as we would have liked it. I'm the first to admit that I'm, you know, I much rather would have used a different process, taken longer to make this decision. But I go back to that urgency issue that I shared with you in that data, we've got kids at the school in the pipeline that need help next fall and that means we've got to do something different with our schedule. So, last thing I'll say, this decision was reached because of decisions related to curriculum, required minutes, the needs for interventions, and accessibility issues for all kids. Administrative-wise, we support the decision and that's why I made the recommendation to allow Paxton to move forward with their plans to change the model. And I would stand for any questions. Julie, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I just wanted to advocate for my staff. My teaching staff is phenomenal. They have worked for nine years to try and make this model work. We believe in second language acquisition. We believe that all kids benefit from Spanish and learning a second language. It just can't come at the cost of everything else associated with being part of a larger district and a neighborhood school. We really feel like we, with our current staff, we could be a language immersion school, but we can't also be a neighborhood school. And we feel really strongly that we should be a neighborhood school with a Spanish language focus, which is still unique to our state, unique to our region, and something we really want to advocate for. But we do want to prioritize being a neighborhood school and serving all of our neighborhood kids.
All right, I'll open it up for questions for Dr. Watson, our principal Robitaille. Anybody? Trustee Mercer?
So, back on the history, it's my understanding, and I guess it's the question to correct if this is true, that the reason this program exists at Paxton and not any of the other schools is because the teachers in the building of Paxton put it together and chose to do it. Is that true or why isn't there a Spanish immersion program at Russell?
Great question. Julie can probably answer that best.
This was one of the 21st century... This was one of the 21st century learning initiatives that came to be when Dr. Apostel, Dr. Alex Apostel, was superintendent of Missoula County Public Schools. I served as curriculum coordinator at that time and was at the heart of that. So he went to more of a regional model and was looking for schools to specialize in certain programs. So this is when International Backglowit was implemented at Lewis &amp; Clark, and it was more like, where can we do something unique and innovative where we feel it can grow and the families in that neighborhood are interested and so forth? So Paxson was the school that became the language school. And then you could see from the history that it really did start out as a model program similar to those in Utah, which our model is based on. But then this conundrum of, well, we're still need to be a neighborhood school, and so we've been trying nine years to make those two things work together, and we're at that crossroads now.
But so fundamentally, wasn't it because the teachers, I mean, when IB came up, the reason that IB was at Lewis &amp; Clark, we were told, is that the teachers at Lewis &amp; Clark got together and chose to do it? If, I just asked my question. So then the follow-up question is, on this list of changes, and some of these are big, going from thirds to half, are any of these the result of any board vote?
I'll try to answer your first question first. So you're correct, the IB process at Lewis &amp; Clark was sort of a grassroots process from the staff. I don't know if I could describe the same at Paxson. I'm sorry, I wasn't here, and I don't know. And Julie, maybe you know, or we could, yeah, go ahead.
Well, we, there were no Spanish-speaking teachers that I know of when this process started. So they had to be slowly recruited and added to the current teaching staff to be able to build the model from kindergarten. I think it started kindergarten and first grade, so there had to be, you know, at least two Spanish bilingual teachers to get the program started.
Yeah, and I think the real question, Julie, is do we know how much buy-in there was that first year across the staff? And I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I think it was challenging, because the teachers have a unique skill set, but still are under the MEA, you know, Teachers Union contract. So, yeah, it was, I think it was not an easy sell. It was not, but as we grew and changed, I mean, we all have come to value, like I said, very much the acquisition of a second language.
And I forgot your second question, I'm sorry.
So quickly, just leading up to, I'm confused why this is a board action. I don't see any of the things that got us here to be board votes. I don't see the policy as requiring this, because if the policy required this and there were no votes, then it's acting illegally right now anyways. So why is this to the board right now?
Yeah, I think the best way I can describe that, Cohen, trustee Mercer, is that you're correct. We made tweaks and changes to the program, but at its heart, what we were trying to do is to get full immersion. And now we're at a point where we want to pull back from full immersion. That seems to be a significant change to an academic program at a school, which is why I asked the board to make the decision. But you're right, we didn't have any board decisions to get to this point.
I have a follow-up question to that, because that's really similar to Lewis &amp; Clark, where my sons go where there's no longer IB. And we were told, and there's, that's really similar to this.
Yeah, the IB discussion happened in a similar way. Our staff members at Lewis &amp; Clark are still looking at providing a lot of the tenants of IB, but they didn't want to have to go through the reauthorization process. So in my mind, it was more of a function of not reauthorizing, rather than completely pulling away from IB. They're still going to have some of the tenants of IB in the school, but they won't be officially authorized.
Trustee Witt?
Well, I'm changing the order of my questions now, because, yeah, trustee Mercer's questions kind of are leading me to this one. This is kind of more for Bea, I guess, because we're questioning whether or not this should be a board action item, and if we, like, never approved the beginning of this, and now we're asked to be stepping into this, are we violating policy or law in any way back then or now?
Well, the easy answer to that one is no, you didn't violate it back then, and you're not violating it now. I think what the administration is looking for direction, I think, from the board, because this is a big decision, it's a controversial issue, clearly. Last couple meetings, we've seen a great deal of input from parents. I think the administration is asking for input and direction from the board. Could they have done it without you? Probably, they could have. But I think it would have ended up on your doorstep, one way or the other.
Quick follow-up.
Well, this one is kind of not a follow-up, so if you feel like you have to go to someone else, you totally can. Okay, since we're making a decision, we're asked to make a decision, can someone explain to me what the, how Paxson is different from other areas that have implemented a similar program? Like, how it's different from Utah? I've heard some stuff in Oregon and Washington. Is it because those are like magnet schools, they are opt-in, or do they implement them district-wide? All those types of things.
Yeah, I'll let Julie answer that. I do, I did find out one interesting piece of that story. You'll see in the history that, at one point in time, we had a consultant that came in that has worked with a lot of these schools, and she made some recommendations. One of the recommendations she made was not to accept kids at Paxson after a certain grade level. I believe it was after second grade. And that was something that was significantly different from us than other school districts, because we have a neighborhood school policy where we don't turn kids away from their neighborhood school. But that was one of the recommendations that came out of her consulting work, is that you should change that policy and not accept kids after a certain grade level, because we all know how difficult it is. And in a lot of other schools that are using this model, they don't accept kids after a certain grade level. But that's not the whole story, so Julie has more.
Yes, thank you. As Dr. Watson said, that we based our model after Portland and Utah, and they have a lot of state-level support, especially in Utah. They have a language focus across all their districts, and I actually got to go visit a couple of those schools, a Mandarin Chinese one and a Spanish elementary school. And they were placed in neighborhoods with decreasing, declining enrollment, the one I went to, anyway. And that's my understanding of the model in Utah, that they are more of a public magnet school. So they serve the kids in that neighborhood and then open up in lottery to everyone else in the district who might want to go to that specific speaking language school. The people who are in the area who want to stay at that school have to opt-in. And like Rob said, there are policies where, that you can't enroll in that school after mid-year, second grade. So number one, backed by the state level, so there's training and resources and collaboration. Number two, there's a lottery system for enrolling in the program. And number three, they don't accept new enrollment after mid-year, second grade.
Trustee Witcher?
First of all, I wanted to thank everyone at Paxson, both parents and the teachers, for their arduous, hard work on this. I'm interested in two questions. The first one being, we touched on whether or not Keegan, or trustee Witt, asked if the board was at any possible liability in process. But a lot of the public comment that's been focused on has been saying that the process itself, that was done by the building administration, teachers, and our superintendent, was in infraction of board policy. And I'm just looking at, would like to hear from our lawyer to see if that's in fact true, or where that lays.
So you're asking me about the complaint that was filed?
Correct.
Okay, so there's a couple of different things about that complaint. First, it's not properly in front of the board yet. It is required to go to Dr. Watson first. There's an aspect of the complaint also that's about an individual employee, that is a subordinate employee. So that has to be investigated at the administrative level and a decision rendered before it can get to the board. The other issues in the complaint have to do with the idea that the open meeting law was violated by not inviting parents to these meetings. The open meeting law doesn't apply generally to meetings between building-level administrators and their staff. There are staff meetings that happen all the time that are not covered by the open meeting law. There are allegations that the board's policies regarding curriculum were violated, and there's not enough information in the complaint for me to tell you definitively yea or nay. But based on my knowledge of your policies, there, I mean, the board can certainly entertain those complaints, but it wouldn't stop you from doing what you're doing tonight. And I don't see that there's been a violation. I think that there are folks who are very unhappy with the process that was used to make this decision, but that doesn't invalidate the process, nor does it make the process illegal. It means that they would have preferred a different process. But I don't see, on the complaint, on the face of the complaint itself, I don't see any violations of your policy or law.
Thank you. Second question is, when I went through the schedule, and this is for the wonderful principal, so I know the Lewis &amp; Clark model, when they moved from IB, the kids use their Spanish time as a special, and their special schedule is 45 minutes in a period of four days. With this proposed schedule, every child at Paxson would get Spanish for 45 minutes. Would that be taking away from another special? Would it be in a special model? Or what chunk is being taken away to put Spanish in? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for that question, trustee Witcher. We are so fortunate, so Lewis &amp; Clark is fortunate, they have one Spanish teacher for all six grade levels, and we have two Spanish teachers at every grade level. Therefore, we are able to meet the district instructional minutes for all of our core content areas. And if you look at that chart, I think it's included, and you add up all of those minutes, there's exactly 45 minutes left in the day. And so I've been asked the question, well, what do other schools do? And, you know, like, for instance, Lowell, I believe that's when they do their leader in me, social-emotional learning curriculum. I know at Lewis &amp; Clark, that's when they used to do their, you know, inquiry-based learning that go deeper with those units of inquiry. It is the open and available time that's available to all schools, and Paxson would like to use that for Spanish.
Trustee Walker Andrews?
Yes, this is sort of a follow-up on Mr. Witt's question, trustee Witt. It seemed to me that all of these changes that people have made are heroic, and that people really do want children to have the opportunity to learn a second language. But what struck me is that it still doesn't really fit the models that I've looked at elsewhere. So, for example, one or two papers that I read suggested that you really want these immersion programs to have, say, 30% of kids in one language as their native language and 70% in another. And that could be one of the differences that you would find, say, in Utah or someplace else, that there's a much more diverse language groupings. And another thing is that really ours is sort of really one-way immersion in that sense. It's not a lot of children trying to learn English, it's children trying to learn Spanish. So I'm just saying that we don't seem to have met all of the kinds of things people are looking for when they create these immersion programs. Not that it's not a great idea to have kids learn a second language, and I think we all want that. I was wondering also about, and I think you mentioned this before, Principal Roba, how do I say that?
Robeta.
Robeta, that you could maybe use the win period, such that kids who are really wanting to have a great deal of Spanish would have 45 minutes plus another 45 minutes?
It would be an additional 30 minutes a day, so equalling 75 minutes a day, which is not that far off from what some of our kids are getting now, which is 90 minutes a day. So, I mean, we would be open to after-school programming, but that's what we could accomplish during the day and feel solid about that.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I have two, if that's okay. The first is, just to clarify, that we're not actually being asked to approve a specific structure of delivery in the fall. Simply, and I think the questions have been well-placed about, like, why is this even in front of the board? We're kind of being asked to affirm a course shift away from sort of piece-by-piece, change-by-change, toward whatever full DLI looks like in a school that's primarily native English speakers versus a school that has a Spanish specialty. That's kind of, so that's kind of what we're being asked. But we're not actually getting into the granular detail of what that delivery is going to look like, and so that questions and conversation about that amongst the staff, including the 75 or 25%, however it has been, that conversation is going to continue. Am I right in kind of laying that?
Yeah, I have worded the recommendation to specifically say that you would affirm, if you want to call it that, but you would support, move forward with their plan to change the model for delivery. That's really what we're talking about. So we're no longer delivering Spanish in an immersion model, we're delivering it in as an individual class. So that's really what I'm asking you to affirm.
Okay. And my other question is kind of getting back to the history as well, because I also remember those early days a little bit. And if I'm not mistaken, there was actually quite a bit of consternation among the parent community around the adoption of this model in the first place, too. It was not a smooth or easy transition, and there were many people who were pretty upset about what was happening to their neighborhood school at that time, too. And so I think that's maybe an important piece to remember. I'm just asking, is that true? And then, in terms of parents whose children have not been able to attend Paxson, we're probably, at this point, not going to be able to pull them back into the school necessarily. But have, will we try to communicate with them? Or have, like, what is it that we're hearing, or who are those parents? There's kind of this apocryphal sense that there are a lot of them.
Yeah. To answer your first question, I don't know what the level of acceptance was when it was introduced, and Julie might know a little bit more, I don't know. I will answer your second question. So I want to be clear, all of our schools have a few kids that request an out-of-area school. At the elementary level, Russ sees all of those, and some of them, we don't have a lot of room, so we don't do a lot of movement at the elementary level. So obviously, as times change and schools change, people are always welcome back to their neighborhood school, and we'll do the best we can to communicate those decisions that have been made. I also want to point out that I don't think it's a lot of students, so, and I know that one of the trustees asked me about numbers. Unfortunately, we don't have the numbers. I can gather those for the trustees, but I don't think you're going to see, and Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you're going to see a lot more kids at Paxson than you would at other schools that have requested out-of-area. But for me, it was more of a concern about why they're requesting it, and if it's specifically because we can't fill their needs at Paxson because of our program that we implemented, that's a different concern. But Russ, do you have any recollection on Paxson out-of-area?
Not exact numbers, but I can tell you that the refugee kids specifically, we don't place at Paxson. And there are a couple places inside Paxson's attendance boundaries that refugee families land, so we're very careful not to put them there, because it hasn't worked well. So I don't know the exact number, but I can find out without any trouble. But there are kids that we definitely don't place there for language reasons.
I'd like to say, first off, that speaking up is hard, and speaking up in public for these kids that have come out, I have a tremendous amount of respect for that, so I want to tell them that I really appreciate that. A lot of the reoccurring theme in the public comment seems to have been lack of communication. And as we talk about this, and I've been reading the background on this, I want to, first off, and I think that the question has already been answered, that we haven't violated any kind of rules, laws, or anything like that. violated any kind of rules, laws, or anything like that in this. But when you read a lot of this stuff, there seems to be some misunderstanding exactly what curriculum is, what instructional material is, what delivery is. Is there any way, just for the sake of expediency, could we maybe put some kind of a brief definition together of that and put it on the website so that they can come and look and say, oh, well, this is not something that would be addressed in this particular way, just to make it easier on everybody?
Yes, we can make that more prominent on our website. We actually have a policy that has the definition of textbooks and instructional materials. The board just approved that policy in April, I believe. So there are some specific definitions in that policy, but we can make sure it's more prominent on our website.
Thank you.
Trustee Mercer.
So to follow that, I mean, this is the question for Bea. The first instructional policy 2120, this is on page 62 of our packet, the first sentence, I still don't feel like there's clear guidance of, does this change that's being proposed, is it covered by that? Is it a curriculum change requiring board action? Or not? Are there new textbooks, are there textbooks involved? How about that question?
There currently are no textbooks involved because, let me see if I can explain this, and Julie will help me. We're teaching Spanish in another subject. So yes, there is instructional materials related to science, which you all just approved for K-8. There's instructional materials related to social studies, we're going to work on the social studies materials next year. But there's no textbook for Spanish because we're teaching those subjects in Spanish. Now, we may have some instructional resources that teachers develop in their classroom to help them teach that Spanish, but Julie, do you have any other thoughts around that?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the question because I think there is confusion around what's curriculum and what's program delivery. And we do not have a Spanish-as-a-second-language textbook, or we are starting to look at resources, and that's what we would like to take next year to do and to bring that to you. I know social studies is going to be reviewed next year, and I've already talked to Russ, Lodge, and Vinnie Giammona, and Barbara Frank, and asked that world languages be included with that review so that we can look at Spanish K-12 and start looking towards building that, you know, K-5, Spanish-as-a-second-language model, whether it's a special or, like us, offered every day. I think that'll be the next step, and I welcome parent engagement and involvement in that as we try to find the best possible resources to be our curriculum that we would bring to you.
And what Julie just described, it will impact more than Paxton because we're currently teaching Spanish as a special at Lewis and Clark and at Franklin. Those teachers have done great work in cobbling together resources, but they've never really had a full curriculum, and that's something they've been asking for. So the work that Julie describes will also trickle into Franklin and Lewis and Clark with the two Spanish teachers at those schools.
So that leads me to a question I have. So at the other six elementary schools, there is no language?
Currently, there is not. We have Spanish at Franklin and Lewis and Clark because of the IB program, but those schools are moving away from IB, but we made the commitment to keep the Spanish language there. And quite honestly, Chair Old Person, we hope to discuss that a little further in the strategic planning work session this evening, because having a second language available to all schools would be important for all of us, and it's something we'd like to work towards.
Trustee Mercer.
One more question, I'll drop it. So could we then say, as a board, could we put on next month's agenda that we will order Lowell to have Spanish rather than Leadership in Me? Is that a valid board action? If the majority of these Lowell parents want it?
I don't know if I completely understand your question. Can you rephrase it or ask it again?
My question is, I feel like we're being asked, if we approve this one or disapprove it, then what's different on any other elementary school? I mean, why is Lowell's thing not subject to board approval? Why was the IB not subject to board approval? I guess it's just, this feels like we are being asked to do something today that we have never done anywhere else that I can see. I still haven't heard that this program was even created. I know there was initiative that said, you guys can do whatever you want in your schools, but was there a board vote that created DLI at Paxton?
I don't believe so, no. There was a recognition of a strategic plan that had several initiatives within the strategic plan, but I don't believe there was a specific vote by the board to start this program. And we have plenty of staff here this evening that could answer that question, but I wasn't here, and so I don't know that for sure. Julie, do you know?
I don't believe so. Like you said, I believe it was part of the strategic plan, but it wasn't designated that Paxton would have this program in perpetuity.
Trustee Decker.
It's not really a question, but I feel like I want to say something about that, which is that I think if this is something that the board should be discussing, it's because it speaks to that kind of course shift. There was a time at which, as Ms. Robata mentioned, the district was very much and very explicitly moving towards specialization across the district. Pockets of innovation that were meant to then lead to others seeing what cool thing was happening and then adopting that. That's when the Health Science Academy got going at Big Sky High School, for example, DLI, Project Lead the Way. Some programs over the years have expanded more broadly and even become almost universal, like Project Lead the Way. Others have remained in pockets. And I think our pendulum as a district has very much swung to a place where we're trying to think in a different way about what all students are able to access and whether all students are getting what they need. And that's a really different starting place than this idea of pockets of innovation and pockets of excellence, where every program is supposed to have a specialization. And because, I mean, I think it's good to be unpacking this and saying, like, this is exactly the conversation that we're having, and while it's a little not in the board's, it wouldn't be appropriate for the board to say, you need to go do that program now and you need to go do that. That's not our job. But in affirming this shift, it's sort of acknowledging that these core values that we've adopted in our strategic plan are actually going to be driving the kinds of changes that we support when staff bring them forward. You know, that there is a shift. And adopting a new strategic plan is about acknowledging that there's change and movement going on, that we're no longer operating under the strategic plan that was adopted back in, like, 20 whatever, 14, 15.
Trustee Witt.
Yeah, I just kind of had a follow-up question to what Trustee Decker is talking about, which is, my understanding is back when this started, in those pockets of innovation or pockets of excellence, was that there was more open enrollment and that you could shift schools? Was that really the case or not?
Not at K-5.
Okay, more, was it more available in the high schools?
Yeah.
Because right now, my understanding is that's not as easy to do.
We have a process in place to do it at high school. It's still available at high school, but there's a stricter process in place.
I have a question, and Pat might have to help. Hearing, I keep hearing about magnet schools, and we're a public education system. If we were to go forward and try to create a magnet school, how much money is that? If we want to do something like that? I know a few of us trustees kind of talked about this a little, and just passing.
I think you would, and this is just sort of spitballing, but I think you would still have to identify and meet accreditation requirements at that school, which would include administration, counseling, library-type services. And then you would also need to look closely at how the transportation would work for that school, and if we're looking at a location, you know, that one of our current empty buildings, what would it take for that building to get up to standards in terms of bandwidth, access to internet, in terms of safety, security, that type of thing? Some of the upgrades that were consistently performed at all the other elementary buildings. Those would be some of the considerations, I would think, along with the, I mean, the accreditation staffing would also include, of course, teaching staff.
Trustee Mercer.
So along those lines, just to fill the question out, could the administration, or could we do a subcommittee or something, how would we go about getting answers to that? Because I think what I heard, we can't have immersion in a neighborhood school, that seems to be the core point. So immersion requires something that's an opt-in, it also addresses our equity concerns if it's a drop-in, adopted from all our communities. So can the administration be requested to put together a more sketched-out thing of what it would take to turn Mount Jumbo into that, what the transportation bill would be, whatever? I mean, I would really like to see what that looked like, and maybe it's impossible, but let's see.
Yeah, and as with all requests from the board, I would just, the only thing I would ask, and it's definitely something we can talk about in our work session, I would ask that it be tied to our strategic plan. And there's probably a spot in our strategic plan where that makes sense to start investigating that, but I would encourage the board, when you start thinking about requests made of administration, you know, make sure you're tying it to one of the strategic plan goals.
Any more questions? Trustee Witt.
Yeah, this is a little bit of a shift in focus with it, but just going back to some of the conflicts that are listed out on page 58, and saying that they're struggling to meet district-required minutes for subjects, can you talk a little bit more about that? And like, what's being missed and cut off currently?
Thank you for that question. So when our day is divided in half, and for instance, you know, I'm thinking of fourth grade, so the English-speaking teacher has half the day where she has her homeroom, and then her homeroom goes to the Spanish-speaking teacher for science, social studies, and Spanish language arts. And then she teaches the second class of kids, math and ELA. So in English language arts, it's 90 minutes plus 30 of writing, and then 60 minutes of math. So you can see that that is a tremendous amount of core content that is assessed at the state level through smarter balanced assessment and at the district level. All of that is being carried on the weight of one teacher twice a day. It's a schedule that's incredibly difficult, and then to provide intervention in addition to that is really, really challenging.
Yeah, and kind of to follow up with that, like, so I'm hearing stuff which kind of goes to other parts in here of, like, teacher turnover and stuff, like, teachers getting burned out because of things like this. Is it also affecting academic progress compared to some of the other schools? And I don't want to talk achievement, because that's such a product of the individual children in there, but how they're growing and progressing, is it affecting that, too?
Well, we have an amazing staff, and we just bend over backwards to meet the needs of kids, whether it's Spanish-speaking teachers or English-speaking teachers. We all do our best to meet kids' needs. I will say, when I look at our data, we are definitely not, you know, the highest-achieving school in the district. We're kind of right in the middle. Our kids are growing, they are learning. Spanish, you know, isn't, I know you heard from a lot of our students who believe that Spanish is like the highlight of their day, and that is fantastic. That's because, a tribute to our amazing teachers. But as Rob pointed out with that reading data, and it is an impact of COVID to a certain extent, that our lower-grade students, we're seeing that gap in learning, that gap in reading, that we are feeling that urgency, that we really need to close that gap. Now, we can still offer that academic advancement, we're not, you know, dumbing down the curriculum or anything, we're just dedicating the time necessary to make sure all of our kids are getting that core content to meet the state and district standards that we've all agreed to, to meet in English. And honestly, the standards-based report card has brought a lot of this conversation professionally to the forefront with my staff, because they have this conundrum of, okay, here's this science standard that I'm expected to help my kids meet, and yet I'm teaching that standard in Spanish, I have to go more slowly, and I have this brand-new student who came in who hasn't had any experience with Spanish, therefore, you know, and so you can see how that all kind of plays out, where it would be so much more advantageous, and also, training-wise, to be able to have our teachers learn the new science curriculum in English, deliver it in English, be ready to go. That's one of the areas that I would like to see implemented for next year, for sure.
Sorry, still more follow-ups. Rob talked about reading by third grade, and I've heard that that's really important. And can you speak to that and like how you think this change might help getting people to read at grade level by third grade? But yeah, first, why is third grade the important benchmark?
I would just say, I mean, you can look at a lot of national research that ties back to that third-grade reading level. It's a great predictor for high school dropouts. Now, not every kid is going to be reading by third grade, we know that, but, and not every kid that is not reading by third grade is going to drop out of high school, I'm not saying that either, it's just a predictor, there's a strong tie between there. I want to be clear, the third-grading reading issue is not just a Paxton issue, it's district-wide. We've got concerns at every single school, primarily due to COVID and coming out of COVID and now getting back to being able to provide interventions. The difference that exists in some of our other schools is they have more flexibility in their school day to provide those interventions than we have at Paxton. Julie, would you add anything else?
Yeah, it just becomes a debate, like, which class do you pull the student out of to make sure they get that intervention that they so desperately need in reading or in math? You know, what are they missing to have that intervention? Whereas with the proposed model, we have built-in intervention time, and we have adequate time for English language arts and writing, where we can really do a lot of targeted instruction, skill instruction, and get those kids up to where they need to be.
Any more questions? Trustee Witcher.
I have, I just have one question. Regardless of the outcome of the vote of everything, what I see is kind of like a community divided, and that's concerning to me. As a board member, I see, you know, staff divided just from public comment that's been sent in, I see parents divided and feeling alienated by their neighbors, and as kind of, I mean, this might be for Russ with Rob stepping down as well, what's the plan to reconfigure your community? And whatever's voted tonight, how are we, what is being put into place to move forward with your teaching staff and with the parents?
You know, I'll answer that a little bit. First of all, I think we need to get through tonight's, who we're at. And then, I have a lot of faith in the staff and Julie at Paxton to connect with their parent community. It's certainly one of the tenants of our new strategic plan, and you do that, just like you do everything in relationships, you do it one day at a time, and that's really what will happen, is they will reach out to their parents, the parents will respond, and I think over time, and I think it will take some time, I think the community will come together. But I'm not naive, it's not going to be together right away, but I do think there's, all the people I've heard and the passion I've heard, I've never heard anybody not put kids first. And so I think the idea that parents and staff and community and administration will all put the kids first, I think adults will put their differences aside to a great extent, and I think the community will come together sooner rather than later, because it's been a community a long time. So I just have faith in the system and faith in the people who live in the area and who work in the district. I think it'll work out, but it's going to take some time to get there. there.
I see no other hands up for questions? Oh, Trustee Witt?
Sorry, I got lots, thanks to public comment largely, and then just things that are going on in the meeting. First, this one's really a yes or no for Rob, like you said, they recommended that you don't accept kids after second grade new into Paxton. We're not doing that, correct?
No, we're not doing that.
Okay. Budget-wise, does this change of moving from dual-language immersion to 45 minutes, does this affect the, the costs of running the school? Is there any budgetary effect?
I can see no budgetary effect.
Okay, and can then someone talk about, like, I've heard the teachers are pretty close to unanimous on this in Paxton, can someone talk about, you know, how many teachers were involved, how many of them were in favor of this statement that was put out?
Yeah, so I know Julie did a little bit of research on that. I would tell you that when we started the process, all the meetings were open to everybody. We had, like I told you earlier, 25, I'm sorry, 23 to 27, I think our highest meeting had 27, not just teachers, we had classified staff there as well. Julie, you did some research on that, I think it was 70, I think overall it was 75% of your teaching staff, and of that 75%, 96% of the 75% were in favor. Am I right, Julie?
Yeah, that's correct, and when we did the consensus-building model and did thumbs up, you know, around the room, there were, there was only one thumb sideways, and it was, you know, I disagree, but will support moving forward. And that, I mean, to go back to the previous question as well, I mean, there's going to be a lot of healing that needs to happen next year, and I'm already working in my mind as to how to accomplish that. I think one thing that will really bring our staff together, if we do move, if we get to move in this direction, is that we will have, we will be teaching the same content at the same time, you know, as a team, and we haven't really had that. We've had Spanish-speaking teachers and English-speaking teachers, and now we'll all be teaching together, and I think that will really help. As far as the parent component, I've already been working with some parents who have reached out with great ideas. I think, again, engaging our parent committee and group in the decisions about how we structure that 45 minutes a day, and seeking their feedback and involvement on that will be key in helping us heal and, and move forward.
Trustee Mercer?
So do we then recognize that parents feel legitimately blindsided by the way this went down, and we're going to do something different next year about saying that things are struggling? I guess I will say, as a board member, when I went in toward Paxton, I think it was this fall, no one said there was any problems, it was all, everything's good in Spanish. So I felt, so I guess, do we acknowledge that? Have we done some self-assessment about how we can communicate better with them next year? And maybe say sorry?
Definitely own the process, I own the, the decisions that were made, I realize that it was not perfect, and yes, we, we, we made some mistakes along the way. I, I do want to comment, Trustee Mercer, on, on something you said about, about how things are going, and this is not, also not unique to Paxton. What I, what I know about teachers is they're really proud of what they do. What I know about elementary teachers specifically is they always put on a good face, and they do that because their kids need that, their kids need that smile every single day. And so I'm not surprised at all that you didn't see some of the stress and the, the exhaustion that was related to this model, because the teachers would never show that, it would be outside of their nature to show that. And that's not just at Paxton, that's at every single elementary school. So I think, I think we can all do a better job of acknowledging that in the future, and I don't disagree with you.
Trustee Witt?
All right, I think this is my last one. I've heard, you know, quite a bit, we're talking about some of kids that are struggling, and we haven't been talking that much about those that are high-achieving, and my understanding is they're about the same percentage at Paxton, there's somewhere around 5% are considered high-achieving, about 5% are considered special needs. What would this create for those high-achieving students if we changed, or what, or are they missing out on something, or are they getting something new?
Actually, I'm super excited, because they will get this new science curriculum that you all approved and adopted, they will get to do more of it, because it will be in English going at a pace where they can really delve deep and, and do some nice work with it, which I'm very excited about. And then social studies, the following year, if that's reviewed this year. They will have more opportunity for advancement in math, because, again, the flexibility that the day provides when you're not so closely aligned to sharing equal amounts of time between two teachers. So we will adhere to the minutes, but we have that win time, we also have teachers teaching common content, and we can do walk-to models, like, for instance, during part of that math time, one teacher can take the advanced kids while another teacher helps those kids that need more time and intervention. So we're doing targeted advancement and targeted skill development as more of a walk-to model, whereas currently, we can't do that, because we're so bound by that schedule and how much we're teaching in Spanish or English.
See no more hands up, I'll entertain a motion by trustee, oh, trustee Wallack.
I actually had a question for the legal team, but it looks like she knew it was coming, because she's not here anymore. Or I just waited too long, but either way, I'll throw it out, maybe Dr. Watson knows something about it. You mentioned earlier the federal mandates in order to serve all students in a neighborhood school, and the requirement to, to obey that essentially. Being in the federal government, I know the feds have some big sticks to come after people with if things aren't the way they are supposed to be by regulations, so do you have any idea how big of a stick we're looking at getting hit with if someone were to make an issue out of this?
You know, I think, I think-
Who might get hit with it?
Yeah, I think to understand that, I think, just really, really briefly, so the federal mandate is to educate kids in the least restrictive environment. So years and years ago, and you're going way back before 1974, when they came out with the inclusion law for sped kids, you could essentially educate a special education student in a totally different setting. You could pull them out of a school and say, we're not even going to put you in a school, we're going to put you somewhere else. And what the inclusion process has taught us is we need to educate those students in their setting, in the setting in their neighborhood. So we do the best job we can with that. So the, the stick would be violating that least restrictive environment, and no, we probably aren't going to get sued right away, but eventually, I think it does open up the district for liability, because we're basically saying that we have a program at a school, at your neighborhood school, that you can't be there because of a school-wide program that, that, that hampers your ability to succeed. I think, I think we do open ourselves up for liability, and it only takes one student to, to create that liability. That was my point in, in talking about inclusion in the strategic plan.
No more hands up? I will entertain a motion by an elementary trustee.
I move that we affirm the administration's recommendation, that we affirm the staff and administration's plan to move away, or to move, let me see, how is it worded? What I, what I want to say is that we affirm their recommendation to, to no longer use a 50-50 model, or to be pursuing full immersion as it has been, and develop a different plan.
Do I have a second from an elementary trustee? Second by trustee Hobbins. All right, now, open it up for board discretion, discussion before we move on to public comment. Any board discussion? Trustee Mercer?
I mean, to be explicit, so, I mean, I, I think this is a building-level decision, I think it's a building-level program, I think it's a building-level decision. I don't like how they went about making it necessarily, but I don't think that changes the fact that, to me, it's a building-level decision. I do strongly think we should have a conversation about a magnet school for Missoula, all of Missoula. I think all the things that said were great about this apply. I can't, and I circled, I can't get past the part where refugee students were moved to another school, I can't get past that, so. So I'll probably support this, because it's the same thing as the administration would, or not the administration, the building would do, but I have great reservations, because I don't think it's a building-level decision. And I do hope the chair, or however, on a future meeting, we can think about this sort of program as it was meant to be for all Missoulians.
Trustee Witt?
I agree with you, Trustee Mercer, on, I think, pretty much every point there. I do think it was probably a building-level and administration decision. I like the idea of looking at a magnet school, we wanted to be bold, and I think that is a bold idea, so I really like the idea of going into that. I'm also bothered by the fact that we had to turn away kids and say, like, we can't place you there. I'm bothered by the idea that, that the recommendation from a consultant was that if you're second grade or above, that you don't go there as a neighborhood school, that, that really bothers me. I'm glad we didn't do it, because then, you know, Rob's big stick that he's talking about, sounds like it would come down pretty hard. But overall, I know this is a very emotional decision, I know there's a lot of emotions out there that we're going to hear about in a minute, and so far, it's all been pretty respectful, and I'm, I'm very grateful for that.
Trustee Decker?
I just want to say that I think that dual-language immersion has tremendous potential for kids, and that that's not what this is about. I think that programs that people in, programs are teachers, teachers are the program, teachers are the, the school. And when teachers are enthusiastic about what they're doing, the sky is the limit for all kids, and I want all teachers to feel passion about what they're doing and why, and I want all kids to be in programs that feel that way. That, that's not up for question, I don't think, among anyone who's thinking about the district or the school. Our responsibility is to, to do, to do the most good for all kids, which includes doing what's good for staff. And when staff are telling us that, that after having put in just a tremendous amount of work and commitment, that it's time to tweak again in a direction that feels like a different direction, you know, are, are we in a situation where there's a pattern of, of decisions being made with poor outcomes? I don't look at the track record of this district and see that. I see a district that's willing to, to, to make changes when the evidence that, that teachers see from all kids warrants it, and to not continue with something that's not serving us in the way that we thought it might eight or nine years ago. I was stunned to see the history of how differently immersion has looked from year to year to year, and that truly, this 50-50 model that folks are feeling really passionate about, and I, and I hear that passion, is only a couple of years old, school-wide. That's not a model that kids in Paxton have had really across the board in the school for a very long time. There's been a tremendous amount of shifting and changing and tweaking as, as the dedicated staff have tried to figure out how to make it work. I, I also am, like, it's, I'm almost like gasping at the idea of having a conversation about magnet schools in, at the board level, and, and trying to think in a visionary way with equity at the heart about what this district could accomplish over time. That's a big, big conversation to have, and an ambitious one, and I think it needs to be a careful one, and certainly needs to have a lot of involvement. It involves the idea of boundaries, the B-word, it involves a lot of things. But, but I think that's a conversation for another time. If there were a pattern to me of the district making these decisions, like rashly, that would be different, but what I see is a district that tries to be responsive, that tries to be inclusive, that owns it when they have not lived up to their high standards, and so that's why I would support this.
Any other board discussion before we move to public comment? All right, so now we'll move on to public comment, and then I just want to remind everybody again, please state your first and last name, sign in, and be respectful of the three minutes, we will cut you off. Paul has a magic button over there. We also would like you to please, don't infringe on the privacy of other individuals, so any public comment?
Adrienne Trinell, Chair, Old Person and Esteemed Trustees. I'm a parent of four kids, one just graduated Paxton, two are coming back in the fall, one will be a Paxton graduate in 2030, so that's eight years from now. I'm bilingual, I volunteer at the school in the Spanish classroom, and I sit on the Board of the Missoula Education Foundation. I have prepared comments, because I'm glad for that. I cannot express to you the profound rupture in trust that has occurred, and that is occurring for me right now. As parents and supporters of students at Paxton, we, as parents, come here tonight, and I'm going to ask you, and we are asking you, for three things. One, I'd like you to deny this motion, Watson's recommendation to eliminate the DLI program at Paxton right now. Two, I'd like to engage and identify a collaborative, transparent, expert process that addresses the changes, if any, that need to be made at Paxton. And three, I'd like to effectuate that process together. What I have heard tonight are excellent questions, excellent questions. Why is this a board decision? Why are you being presented with policy 2120? Why is this, why are quote-unquote "kids" being pulled out? Those are things, why are our teachers not unanimous? They're not unanimous, by the way. In 2013, the board voted unanimously to, to include immersion in the district. That's the history of that policy. There are actually great answers out there, and we don't have them here tonight, because this is being pushed through at the last hour and the last minute. And there is a process, and it is actually available in 2120, the policy that you, as a board, were presented with. The items in here are mandatory, not discretionary. The curricula shall address. A curriculum review cycle and timelines for curriculum development shall be developed. The staff and administration will suggest materials. The district shall assess student progress. The district will use assessment results to improve the education program. These are mandatory. The board must follow this policy. It is not up for debate. When you look at what the teachers stated when they responded, Dr. Watson cited you to pages 58, 59, the policy requires you to evaluate assessment data. What the teachers said, we have no Spanish-
Please finish in sentence. Please finish in sentence. Your time is up. Thank you. Any more public comment? And please adhere to the three minutes.
Hi, my name is Anne Geiger. I put my glasses on. My oldest daughter.
Can you please spell that? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. G-E-I-G-E-R, first name A-N-N-E. My oldest daughter was in the first dual-language immersion cohort at Paxton, and my youngest daughter graduated from Paxton on Friday. Congratulations to her, and thank you to all of her wonderful teachers who have taught her over the years. I'm appreciative of all of you. But at the end of the day, I do believe that the process led by Dr. Watson at Paxton cut corners and violated MCPS policy for reasons other than the curriculum policy infractions that Adrienne spoke about. Section 2159, the superintendent shall undertake activities with respect to engagement for all aspects of its educational program designed to allow families and school staff to partner in decisions that affect children and families and together inform, influence, and create policies, practices, and programs. Section 4120, number four, to assist in the public's involvement, the district will solicit community opinion to ensure the ideas, interests, and concerns are considered in the decision-making processes of the board. Section 6000, there must be provision for appropriate involvement of the staff and the community prior to a decision made by the board. And section 4000, the board, through the leadership of the superintendent and with the assistance of the total staff, will seek to enhance the district's community relations by striving to achieve the following goals. One, to encourage and enhance communications, understanding, trust, and mutual support between the district and the people it serves. Now, here is the first question of the Paxton DLI frequently asked questions in your board packet. These FAQs were not provided to the Paxton community until May 27th. Question number one, what are the recommended changes to the DLI program? Is the program being eliminated? Answer, the program is not being eliminated. That statement is a lie. Let me repeat, that statement is a lie. The recommendation tonight is to eliminate the dual-language immersion program in Paxton and replace it with a program called Spanish as a Second Language, a new program that requires new curriculum, new materials, and staff training. There was a job description that MCPAS posted for ATOSA to help with the conversion from dual-language immersion to Spanish as a Second Language. That kind of lie made to students, their parents, and the community simply destroys trust. At the beginning of the June 1 DLI panel at Paxton, Dr. Watson said, let me be clear that the staff and the administration have made a decision to make some changes to the program. We're not eliminating the program, but we are suggesting changes. There's that lie again, I'm sorry to say, plus an actual statement that a decision had been made. What about board policy, section 2159, about allowing families to partner in the decisions about programs? It seems like the real question before the board now is, do these policies matter? Shouldn't all stakeholders be required to follow them, even an outgoing superintendent? Are the policies meaningless? I believe if you vote to eliminate dual-language immersion at Paxton, that sends our community the message that those policies don't matter. And the next time an issue comes along at one of my kids' schools, maybe I shouldn't look to MCPS policies for help. Members of the board, please decide to include Paxton families, including students, in a true collaborative process and a true data-driven program review at Paxton.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your time and your service to all MCPS stakeholders.
Helena Koele. There is no data to support.
Sorry, ma'am. Can you please spell that?
I can, if it's not part of my three minutes.
I promise I won't. Start it.
Thank you. K-O-E-L-L-E. Okay. I want to second what some people have already said, which is that there is no actual data to support the elimination of DLI. It is only the feelings of some teachers that support the elimination. While those feelings are important and need to be addressed, we cannot decide to simply eradicate beneficial school programs because of the feelings of some teachers. I was a teacher, and I know that teacher satisfaction is very important, both to morale and in order to have optimal student learning. The teacher grievances need to be addressed, but not by eliminating a well-loved and successful program. Our own grassroots efforts have dug up a minimal amount of data, all of which supports, actually, the retention of DLI. If the board votes yes to Watson's recommendations, it will set a precedent. It will send the message that if board policies are violated, it doesn't matter. If some people want to make a school change, they can go ahead, and they can do that without following board policy. It will send the message that if there are outstanding grievances, it doesn't matter. It will send the message that curriculum decisions do not need to be based on data and research. It will also send the message that student and parent opinions don't matter. Robitaille's own survey shows that 86% of Paxton parents think DLI benefits their child. We also want to read the parent survey comments, but we've been denied access to those. 230 parents petitioned to include us in the decision-making process. 98, I think it's over 100 now, parents signed a formal grievance against Watson. Students started their own petition to keep DLI that was totally ignored by teachers, principal, and superintendent. Anecdotally, we were told by teachers that the student survey indicated that kids love Spanish, even those kids without APs. We don't know all the student survey results because, once again, we asked and we did not get an answer. If the board votes yes to Watson's recommendations today, they will send the message that parent and student opinion, data, policies are all irrelevant. What ultimately matters is teachers' feelings. And I also want to say, I would like to have refugees at Paxton too, and I think most people can agree on that. I don't understand why those people were asked to leave Paxton or if they chose to do that themselves. I don't know what the numbers are. So I think what would make sense is, I would like to see how many refugee students were at Paxton each year of the DLI, because tonight it made it sound like refugees have never gone to Paxton during the dual-language immersion program, and as far as I know, that's false. There were refugee kids at Paxton, and I talked to Shirley Lindberg, and she told me that they were moved out of Paxton during COVID because when we only had two days of school, it was really hard for them to have two days of Spanish, and then the next week, two days of English, and then the next week, because essentially, we're getting four days of English instruction per month. So I can see how that was a problem. But as far as I know, there were refugee kids at Paxton before COVID. And did anybody ask them, like, do they want to learn Spanish? I mean, there's lots of refugees in Europe right now. They're all moving to different places. Many of them are learning more than one language. There's, I don't see any inherent reason why refugee kids can't learn Spanish and English.
Your time is up. Thank you.
My name is Whitney Maddox. I've been teaching at Paxton.
Sorry, ma'am. Can you please spell that?
M-A-D-D-O-X. I've been teaching at Paxton for 12 years. I currently teach first grade. I'm also a parent at Paxton to a third grader. I've been part of the DLI program since the beginning, traveling to Utah twice to observe and learn from them. I was amazed by the success of their program, and I was definitely 100% all-in for it to come to Paxton if we could follow the Utah model. I soon realized that the program would come with a lot of challenges we can't overcome in a public school. I'm here today to ask that the board approves the recommendation to change the DLI model. I want to give you a little bit of history of the program to show that this was not a rushed decision or a decision based on a time crunch. This is a decision that's been nine years in the making, a decision that the dedicated staff at Paxton has taken very seriously. Since the day the program began, our staff has spent nearly all of our PLC time devoted to solving problems around DLI. We've made changes to the program over the last nine years, and every time we made a change, there was a new problem that arose. And each time one of those changes were made, we also moved a step farther away from the Utah model that we based our program after. That was a research-based program, and we no longer have any research to show that what we're doing is working. It's like taking a gamble on our students, and that doesn't sit well with me. A few years ago, I was asked to be a part of the DLI task force. This was a group of teachers, administrators, and a lot of parents. There were only two Paxton teachers on this task force, but there were very, a lot of parent voices on the committee, the same voices that you're hearing from tonight and have heard from in other board meetings. It was extremely intimidating to speak up in front of those parents, and it was impossible to tell them the whole truth about the struggles and the struggles of, you know, many of the students that we were failing. It became obvious to me that these parents would do anything to save the program, even if it meant we had to turn kids away from Paxton, even if it meant that we had some kids that cried every single day when they went to Spanish class, even if it meant that some of our kids in third, fourth, and fifth grade were still struggling readers, even if it meant we had to cut out science, social studies, and writing, and even if it meant that we would lose some of Paxton's most treasured teachers. None of that really mattered to them. In the end of the task force, we agreed to move away from the thirds model, and that's when we went full school. The solution helped with equity, but it didn't address our main concerns. The failure to meet the needs of all of our Paxton students is what ultimately led to a request from Paxton staff this year to review the program. We wanted to involve more teachers than just the two that were on the task force this time, and I know that everyone is saying it's not unanimous. It was nearly unanimous, with the exception of just a few teachers. And in public comment, that we did submit a letter from, I believe there were 31 or 32 signatures of Paxton staff in support of this. So I hope that everyone had a chance to see that.
Hi, my name is Molly Nelson, N-E-L-S-O-N. First, thank you for your service representing all of Missoula's community's children. The district attorney has already given us an answer about the legality of this process, so I'm not going to comment that, but I did want to come to share my support for the teachers at Paxton School regarding their requested and recommended changes to the DLI program. Some backstory from my perspective, I have a stepson who was in the first class to receive Spanish instruction at Paxton and is now a sophomore at Hellgate. The middle school years in the Spanish program were somewhat of a disaster, to say the least, and we supplemented his education by hiring a private tutor at that time. I'm thrilled to say that he is capable in the Spanish language, and I am forever grateful that he has been given the opportunity to thrive as a bilingual student. However, the Spanish program has always, as Ms. Maddox just mentioned, had its challenges at Paxton, and I think we've come to an inflection point where we need to allow the professionals to do their jobs and make educated decisions on what is best for the group. It is clear with the letters that were submitted for this meeting that the vast majority of teachers at Paxton agree that some type of change is desperately needed to best serve all of the students in the school. The reality is, this is a public school, not a magnet opt-in school, and the teachers and administrators and board have a primary responsibility to ensure every student that attends their neighborhood taxpayer-funded school gets the highest quality of education and services possible. The teachers have made it clear through their letter and emotional testimonies during the June 1 panel at Paxton that unfortunately, this is not the current reality at Paxton School. Along with my stepson, I have a rising first grader at Paxton and another entering the school in the fall of 2023. No one is contesting that learning a second language as early as possible is incredibly beneficial for kids, and I am grateful for any exposure my children will get in these formative years to hopefully get them well ahead as they progress in their later years of school. But this cannot come at the expense of other children not getting their basic needs met and at the expense of a staff who is fighting a system with no true model to follow, yet their students are still held to the same standards as every other kiddo in Montana. Let's remember that they are the, let's remember that they are recommending changes to the program, not a complete removal of it, definition aside. If you have told me nine years ago that my son will be getting 45 minutes a day of Spanish, including other enrichment opportunities that I hope will develop, I would have been thrilled, and I'm thrilled that the program will hopefully live on forever as a highlight of education at Paxton, even if it's not full immersion. We need to stand behind our terrific staff and hear what they are saying, or we are at risk of losing excellent educators who are burnt out. These are professionals who are in classrooms every day with not only my children, but every child living in the district of Missoula, and parents need to recognize that unless we are on the staff and in the classroom daily, we will never know the true challenges this program creates. I have confidence that enthusiastic teachers will ensure success for every child. I encourage you to vote with the staff and administration for amending the Spanish delivery at Paxton.
Any more public comment?
Jacqueline Burgestrom. Thanks. Boy, I didn't bring anything written. I feel like I, like I'm on summer break or something. I'm the school psychologist at Paxton Elementary and at Washington Middle School, and so I feel like I have a unique perspective here because I get to zoom in on kids' very individual, very unique learning behavioral, social, emotional needs. And then I also am part of our data team, so I get to look at the school-wide data and see trends across grade levels and across the entire school. So I think it's inaccurate to say that we don't look at data because we are very committed to making database decisions at Paxton, and that's actually something that Principal Robitaille has developed and encouraged and supported and improved. I am here today to advocate for this change. I feel passionately that it is something that we need to do for our kids, for our struggling learners, for our refugee students, for our ELL students, which, by the way, many of our ELL students are Native American students, and I think that that is worth mentioning, that these are students that also have unique needs, and we need to support them in any way that we can. We need to support the development of their reading. I'm passionate about reading. I want every child to learn to read. I think that when we look at the numbers of students who are in special education, that does not include the number of struggling learners that we have. There are many more struggling learners than are represented in that special education percentage. And by the way, you know, we also have some crossover between our very gifted learners and our special education students, so we have some very unique learning needs at Paxton. And I think that this model is elegant in its ability to meet the needs of all of those learners. I am proud to be a part of Paxton. I am proud of our teachers. We have amazing Spanish and amazing English teachers, and I think that this is a solution that allows us to use the expertise of all of our teachers to serve the needs of all of our students. And so I thank you for taking on this, you know, in helping us to come to a decision that feels like an open conversation, and I look forward to your decision. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I am not a parent or a teacher in this district, but I have been a language teacher and taught for more than 24 years. And I'm just a little bit concerned about the curriculum for the Spanish classes. I'm thinking that these Spanish teachers may be hindered with curriculum that's less than. And we're making the Spanish social studies, the Spanish science, the Spanish math classes being somehow very inferior to the English classes, and I wonder why that's true. Don't we have the curriculum to support good social studies in Spanish and science and math so that we can be just on par? I know that since I taught language, that you can teach reading and writing, and it doesn't have to conflict with English reading and writing. It can be working in concert. You can work together on those things, and so they don't have to go against each other. So the minutes can count in Spanish. The minutes of learning social studies in Spanish can count. So I'm a little worried about the curriculum, and maybe we could spend some time, or you could spend some time, looking at different methods of delivering curriculum that's at a higher standard for Spanish. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Any more public comment?
Michelle Mori, last name is M-O-R-I. Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Mori. I was born and raised in Missoula and attended Missoula County Public Schools from head start through 12th grade. After graduating from MSU with a degree in elementary education, I moved to Japan to learn about the culture and language and taught English as a second language for 21 years there before moving back to Missoula. So of course, I have passion about second language learning and know that it's important. I joined the Paxton staff as a, as a para educator in February of 2013, just as the DLI program had been announced to the Paxton staff and discussions surrounding the program were beginning. One fact that I would like the board and others to know that I just learned about this. This year was the actual beginning of this DLI program. The first intention was to create a magnet school, and that this district had asked Missoula International School to act as a magnet school, join our district, and ask. But when that was turned down, they needed to find another school, and that landed at Paxton. I also would like to talk about how amazing it had been to participate with my colleagues and administrator in the process of review and rethinking of the DLI model at our school. Superintendent Watson was an amazing facilitator. His fair and unbiased attitude made us feel valued and safe. For some of our staff members, it was the first time to truly feel that. In many meetings over the past nine-plus years, many of my colleagues did not feel comfortable bringing up the flaws in our current model. They were sometimes labeled as anti-Spanish or anti-second language education. Such divisiveness, along with genuine concern for our most vulnerable students, have caused many staff members to transfer to other schools in the district or choose early retirement. I know of at least seven staff members who have confided in myself and other colleagues that these were the main reasons for their departure. While working through this process with Dr. Watson also, we will also had to deal with the reputation and names of several of our staff members being drug through the mud by a handful of dissatisfied parents via social media and other platforms. We also had to deal with confidential staff emails being leaked to the parent community. And at a panel discussion event held at Paxton, we also were bombarded with degrading posters held up by a handful of parents that said, just to name a few, "Don't be fooled," or that we were the sham panel. But even through all this, we persevered and came up with a more equitable and sustainable Spanish program model that we feel will work better for all students. Eighty percent, 86% of our staff signed a statement written by our most veteran teachers stating that the process was open to all and fair and that the proposed solution is the best for the greatest majority of our students. This is the highest percentage of consensus that we have ever reached during the nine-plus years in this program. Thank you.
Olivia DeJohn, D-E-C-A-P-L-J-O-H-N. Something that's being repeated is that this is about teachers' feelings, but this is not, and it has never been, about the feelings of teachers. It is about what is doing best for our students and all of them. If I had 20 kids in my class and something was working for five of them and not 15, we would all be asking, then why aren't we changing it? Why aren't we looking at doing something better? And that's what we're doing now. We're hearing from the same voices over and over again who are opposed to the teachers looking for change, and you're not, for the most part, going to hear from the people who this program is not working for. It is incredibly hard to get up and say, "My child is struggling." It is incredibly hard to put that on public record, to, to ask for the data and really, like, there's certain things that are anonymous and supposed to be. People don't want that. And to expect those things and to think that you deserve to know about how many kids have these issues, to think that you really want to know how many people are displaced, that's just really asking to put people on the spot, people who already don't feel comfortable speaking up and advocating for themselves. And so that's why the teachers are here, because we are advocating for the people who don't feel like they have the power to advocate for themselves.
Hi, Casey Ballou, K-A-C-A-P-L-C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U. I am a middle school teacher and the president of the Missoula Education Association, which represents the amazing teachers and staff that have spoken tonight and many more. I just wanted to thank you for your discussion. I know public comment is sometimes the most painful and sometimes the best part because you can't react to it. But your discussion tonight definitely made it incredibly evident that you pay attention to what's said and what's written in, and that's very much appreciated. I also wanted to thank you for separating the issue with the program from the issue with the process and all the feelings that are involved. And, you know, for looking at the programmatic issues of the, that the staff see and really do put on a brave face to make sure that our students and our parents and our community are as proud as we are of the work that we're doing while not always seeing the underlying issues that we're trying to constantly problem solve. I just want to thank you for listening to those experts who are in the classroom, working with big groups of students, and realizing that advocating for the "we" beyond the "me" takes a mind shift and is a very powerful thing to have to do, and it's something you guys are doing tonight. So thank you for affirming that this is a programmatic decision that belongs in the hands of the building members. We appreciate it.
Petrea Torma, P-E-T-R-E-A-T-O-R-M-A. I am here to speak in agreement with the proposed model. I am excited that this model will be giving our Paxton students literally hundreds more minutes per week in, in Spanish language acquisition than any other school in our district gets. But what I'm most excited about is that this doesn't come from a place of, "I'm really glad that Paxton will be better than every other school," but because we've created a model that could be, in the future, adopted by other schools as well, moving to something that perhaps, as a district, from kindergarten to fifth grade, all students are receiving 45 minutes a day in a foreign language, whether that be Spanish or whether that be Salish, but making language a priority in our, in our district. I'm also excited about the opportunity of being able to have access to vetted programs for the, for the curriculum itself. Because what we have right now are Spanish materials that are designed for native speakers learning how to speak English, which just does not work at our school. I am also excited that my personal children who go to Paxton will have the opportunity to go to school with their neighborhood refugee friends. Because right now, their friends get picked up early in the morning and get bused across the district. I also want to speak really quickly about what Julie said in the crunch that we have, especially in the upper grade levels with ELA and math. I am one of those teachers that teach both of my teams ELA and math. That means I get both classes for 60 minutes in the morning to teach them math and both classes for 90 minutes in the afternoon to teach them ELA. The district requirement is 120 minutes. I get them for 90. The district requirement is 120. I get them for 90. This is, conversely, my Spanish teaching partner, who has her own host of hardships. She gets 60 minutes for each class in the morning to do a 30-minute ENEO program, and she gets the students for 90 minutes in the afternoon to do a 40-minute every-other-day science or social studies. This allows her an amazing opportunity to bring in arts and other integration into her classroom. This is something I don't have an opportunity to do in math and English, and I'm excited about how this new adoption will allow the students to have integration of arts and other subjects in all of their subjects, not just Spanish, and not just social studies, and not just science, but in math and in ELA as well.
My name's Greg Leary. Do you need any other details? G-R-E-G, last name Leary, L-E-A-R-Y. Well, thank you each, each of you for your time. I'm really excited to be a Missoulian because we care about education here. This is the first time I have spoken on the topic after listening over the last month as a parent who found, found out about it at the last minute. It seems to me like this new strategic plan took zero input from the parents, the students, and any theoretical PhD in academia on the topic. And that did, that doesn't feel much like a neighborhood school approach. You asked for a bold program, and I really didn't have an opinion either way, but this is a bold program. My children are proud that I'm standing up for it tonight. They reach grade level in Spanish and English. And to be clear, this is quite a bit different than the, the way that the language will be taught in the new program. Not only is the program popular with parents and students, it works. I feel like this is a true accomplishment of public education, especially when I consider how I was taught Spanish and French in high school in a 45-minute lecture twice a week. I'm sure many of you are in that same situation and maybe consider how much of the language you actually retained. I think what we are asking for as parents is for you to delay this decision. This doesn't mean that what the teachers and the administration came to is the wrong path, but it means that we as parents, as academics, and as students had zero input. And I think what we're asking for is just a little more time so that we can come to a better decision. Thank you. I'm, I'm going to make one more point. I, I felt like it was disingenuous, sorry, Mr. Watson, to present the data of just the Paxton School reading assessment alone without comparisons of other data from the schools in the district.
Matt Maddox, M-A-D-D-O-X. And I also want to thank every single one of you for your time in taking consideration of this decision. I personally have a, excuse me, a lot of different inputs on this, and I believe that the teachers and the administration did it correctly, and it's the right choice. Mrs. Maddox is my wife, and I have a daughter going into third grade. And listening to the very small elite group of parents that will come up here and publicly speak against or negatively towards this decision, it really, it bothers me about how selfish they are and not looking at the bigger picture, because this is a public school. And it's great that little Suzie can order her own burrito in Spanish or Johnny gets to go to Spain three times a year. But what about the kid that doesn't know if he's going to get to go to school? Those are the kids that really need to be factored into this decision as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Milton Pomilio Shinin Barreto, and I never had to spell my name. I'm a Spanish teacher at Hellgate High School, and being a teacher is not really my biggest accomplishment as a Spanish, to teach Spanish, but to teach students to be a better citizens of the world, to be understanding, to be caring, to be open-minded, that there's something else outside Missoula, outside of the United States. And I can talk highly about those kids who came from the immersion program. I never have seen kids to be that open-minded or to hear about different living experience of other, of other cultures and never, never felt like, how do I say, to, to, to seem strange to them. They are well-thought, they are, they are just better, better citizens of the world. They are wonderful, and I don't know, what are you, whatever you did before with this program, you did something amazingly. And, and, and I want to thank to those teachers who worked really hard and, yeah, da-da-da. That was, changing to something else, the data used from the Paxton without the comparison of the other schools was just, I don't know. No, you should have used all of, all of other schools. Anyway, thank you.
My name is Barbara Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I want to thank the Paxton School teachers for all their work. It was really amazing coming to Missoula and finding out there is a school who actually teaches another language in a public school. And we actually tried to, we were very excited that our kids could attend that school. My kids, just, one of my kids just graduated, fifth grade at Paxton, and she, I don't know how much she speaks Spanish, because I don't speak Spanish. But she, when she listens to songs in Spanish, she can understand them. So I'm like, wow, that's really cool. And my other son, he is in third grade, and he loves to read in Spanish. And he is struggling reading in English. But just to have this other part of school where he can succeed and be like, "Yes, it's easy to read in Spanish. I like books, I like reading," because I know there's this other part where I'm good at, really motivates him to read in, in English too. And all of my kids, they also learn German outside of school. So my first one, she also was behind in English reading in third grade. And now she's really good in English reading, and she reads books in English, German, and Spanish at home. And that's all from a public school in America. So what I'm saying is, and I want to kind of go to that part, language is not just a language part. Language is also culture. Language brings people together. And when my kids don't want to go to German class, I tell, I tell them, "Every word you learn in German, you can speak with so much more people in your life. Every word you learn in Spanish, you can speak to so much more people in your life." So it's not just grades and achievements. It brings kids together. And I think in the world we live right now, that's very important. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Eaton, J-O-E-E-A-T-O-N. I didn't intend to talk tonight because I have spoken quite a lot, both at the two meetings and at the one here at the, at the school. I don't have prepared comments, but I want to address the point of us being a small elite. So I grew up in southeastern Michigan. My dad is a mechanic. My wife's father spent his career in a foundry. I'm the first person in my family to get a college education. I'm currently a professor at the University of Montana. My wife is a nurse. We're not the elite. Now, there are Now, there are more than 100 people who signed on to this petition. And then, you know, the notion that we're all wealthy people and that we are somehow the elite, that's not true. We may be privileged, and I think that the privilege that we have, specifically someone like me, is that I understand the value of education. The reason I'm not working in the sort of jobs that I worked when I was growing up is because of the education that I had. The reason why parents feel so passionately about the great education that we feel our kids have received at Paxton is because we believe it will help them and allow them to flourish. If I were a privileged person, there are many privileged people here at our school. That's certainly the case. There are a lot of people with a lot of money here who go to school at Paxton. Those people could very easily go to MIS and get a dual-language immersion education. Unfortunately, I'm not one of those people. I don't have that kind of money. And it really, to me, means a lot to me that people who do have that money and could make that decision attend Paxton School. That shows how much they trust that school to educate their kids. So I want you to think about that as you decide this. It's, you know, I'm not, I'm a bit appalled frankly to think that the reason I want my son to learn Spanish is so that he can order burritos in some sort of place. Number one, that man seems confused that people who speak Spanish are all service workers. That's not the case, clearly, right? So Spanish is an important language in our world, and it's one that we want our kids to learn. We believe they've had a high-level education at Paxton School, and that's why we're here to support what's happened. Thank you much, very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Tamara, T A M R A Reschke. Dear Missoula County Public--
Tamara, I'm sorry. I know you, but can you spell that for me?
Sure. R E S C H K E.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet. I am a recent retiree from Paxton and Missoula County Public Schools. Including my student teaching, I have spent almost 35 years working with the Paxton community. I have retired knowing that I truly have had the best job on the planet. In those 35 years, I've seen many changes, the most significant of which has been dual-language immersion these last nine years. As a retiree, I could stay home, go on vacation, or simply leave this issue behind for others to solve, but I cannot. I have seen the triumphs and the struggles of this program and want to support the decision that changes need to be made. Every staff member values the acquisition of a second language. What is being debated is how to best support the acquisition of a second language in our neighborhood school. Our school consists of a variety of populations. We serve families ranging from stable homeowners to families who are homeless. As a teacher who has worked closely with this community, I ask you to support the recommendation presented by the administration and a vast majority of the Paxton staff. This vast majority has been documented in public comment, received via email for this board meeting, as well as the meeting on May 24th. You will note that the support not only includes Paxton's present staff, but also commentary from staff who have worked at Paxton and have left the school, and in some cases even the profession, due to the challenges with dual-language immersion model. The proposal before you today is not eliminating Spanish. It is not gutting the program. It is not devaluing the importance of learning a second language. What it is, is a better way to provide Spanish to our diverse population. We are trusting you, the Missoula County School Board, to respect the professional recommendation of administration and staff and to vote in favor of this necessary program change. Thank you.
Any more?
Lily Chumra, C H U M R A U. Hello, my name is Lily Chumra, and I am here today because I could no longer sit on the sidelines and remain neutral. I have a special connection to this program. My mother, Kelly Chumra, principal at Paxton, helped start this years ago. I heard about this program growing up and always loved the idea of teaching at this school, and even went to school for elementary education and Spanish in hopes of teaching at Paxton. But once I joined the Paxton community, I realized while we are a strong and capable community, it is our students who are the ones who are being compromised. While, yes, we have successful students, it is not equitable to those who are not getting the support and intervention they need. In conversations with my mom, she is sick about the debate that is going on at Paxton and in our community. She is sick that the teachers and students and administration are being put this to appease parents who have the ability to hire tutors who already speak Spanish at home and who have gifted children. We are not suggesting that Paxton get rid of language instruction, we just hope to make adjustments to better serve our students. We realize if this program, if implemented with fidelity like the other programs we based ours off of, it would be successful, but as we are a public school, we need to meet the needs of all of our students and the students in the Paxton community. I believe with this proposed change, we will get the opportunity to reach all of our students and give them even more opportunities to be successful.
Hi, I'm Isabella Clinch, that's C L I N C H, and Isabella is I S A B E L L A. Sorry, just give me one second. Hi, my name is Isabella Clinch, and I am here today in support of the proposed change. I teach in third grade at Paxton in a self-contained classroom similar to Lily Chumra, who are actually one of, the only two teachers in the school that are currently teaching in that model, which offers us the unique experience to not only see the success and challenges of the Spanish portion of the day, but also see the success and challenges in teaching math and ELA at Paxton as well. And what that has shown us is the difficulty in the math and ELA portion of the success, but also the inequity that it presents for those students who don't have a higher level of Spanish proficiency and therefore can't access the instruction in social studies and science in Spanish. Therefore, I feel this new proposal is a much-needed shift in equity, as it would allow all students the opportunity to access not only social studies and science, but Spanish too. Because I think while we want to prioritize the core content, it's also necessary to recognize that we want those students to also gain a level of proficiency in Spanish and hopefully become excited about Spanish and fall in love with it too, to not only see through Spanish to the end of their career at Paxton, but hopefully advocate for themselves and have a healthy and loving relationship with Spanish to choose it in middle school and high school and see the value of it later on in their lives. Therefore, while I think that this will not only help improve their success for all students in social studies, science, and Spanish, I think that it will do this because it will offer a more targeted Spanish language block in which teachers in Spanish and social studies and science and math and ELA will actually have the time to meet in PLCs to make those instructional blocks more targeted and hopefully reach all students and not just those at a higher level of Spanish proficiency. And along with that, I think to add to the positives, while it's easy to look at the negatives of what hasn't worked, it'll also offer us the opportunity for intervention in math and ELA and in Spanish as well. And not only intervention, but extension too, and a much-needed win time which other schools have that we currently don't. And that's something that's a really real and tangible problem in that I just recently spoke with a parent who has a student that's successful in Spanish and moving along, but they desperately need that win time to also meet the needs for their math as well. So they value that Spanish time, but recognize that this new model would allow them to be proficient and successful in Spanish, but also move forward with their math skills as well. So I support this model as it benefits and allows all students to succeed in all core content area and Spanish. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
For those of you that are a primary caregiver for your children, you understand sometimes it takes a while to get the babysitter before you can get somewhere. I am Megan Roden.
If you could spell that for me.
I sure can. M E G H A N, last name R O D I N. I apologize, I was running. My name is Megan Roden, and I teach kindergarten at Paxton Elementary. I have worked as an educator for 18 years and have my master's in early childhood education, the focus being pre-kindergarten through third grade. I am writing today to voice my concerns with the DLI program at Paxton Elementary as it stands today. The current program offers students the option to work on learning Spanish, but this is at the expense of those students who are not ready to be a part of the program or those who do not wish to be a part of the program. Bilingual education can have positive outcomes for some students, but shouldn't at the expense of others. Public education is intended to shape children into thriving students ready for adulthood. How can Paxton meet this expectation when it is leaving students struggling and behind? How can one say that all students are thriving when students are refusing to go to school, are suffering from anxiety and panic attacks, and are escalated, doing what they can to escape the learning environment in the general education classroom? I loved my time with fellow colleagues, students, and families, but I cannot stand behind something that is not what is best for all students. That is against the code of ethics one takes as an educator. The professional educators of Montana Code of Ethics sets out fundamental principles which guide teacher behavior. Principle one focuses on the commitment to students and families. Three aspects of this principle calls on educators to ensure the well-being of students is the foundation of all decisions and actions, to assure just and equitable treatment of every student, and to protect students when their learning or well-being is threatened by the unsafe, incompetent, unethical, or illegal practice of any person. In order to be fair, just, inclusive, and ethical, all students at Paxton must be able to access learning opportunities. At this time, only some, not all, are able to access the learning opportunities we offer. I implore you to look at this from the perspective of a parent who has a child that is struggling, or as a teacher who knows the current way of doing things is adding to children's angst and struggle. Change is necessary. Please support what the majority of the staff at Paxton Elementary is asking you to approve. We truly want what is best for all students, and delaying would be best for some, not all. Thank you.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Kim Olson, K I M O L S O N. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Paxton. I teach the DLI portion, and I was the only teacher with my thumb clearly down when it came to being okay with scaling down dual immersion. I was very upset by that. I feel blindsided by it. Yes, we did come to a consensus, but I feel that my voice is being obscured by that consensus. Allow me to write my name down here before I forget. I also feel that my staff members who have had difficulties, I have also gone through all of those difficulties. I agree with them, I respect their opinion as well. But I just would like to clearly state to the board that neither an exposure nor a Spanish-as-a-second-language model will be sufficient substitutes for immersion. They will not produce the same outcomes. And I know because I've taught both exposure models and Spanish-as-a-second-language for 15 years prior to teaching at Paxton, and also in Washington and Wyoming states, as well as CPS. I mean, bottom line, immersion works. And I know this because 30 years ago, my first teaching experience was in a bilingual school in Comayagua, Honduras, in Honduras, one of the poorest countries in Latin America. I was fresh out of college. I did not go to college to become a teacher, but that's what made me become a teacher. 30 years ago, I was the English-speaking science teacher in this school for Honduran children of middle-class families, and it changed my life. I decided to become a teacher after that experience, and I went back to school to get my degree. And so finally, here I am in Missoula, Montana, I could teach in a bilingual immersion public school. Extremely exciting. It's been a rocky, bumpy journey. We still have not gotten to our goal of achieving 50-50. I came in the midst of the thirds model when the program arrived at fifth grade. But now, here we are heading into the next school year. We have an entire DLI staff ready to go. If we hire an English-speaking teacher at third grade, fourth grade, and fifth, we've got a 50-50 immersion model, as the program had intended to be. So I urge the board to vote to delay this hasty decision to scale down the DLI program. We have nothing to lose by taking our time to make the right decision. We are a public school, we serve our parents and their children, and it is very clear we have a majority support of kids and parents. And I would just hate to see our decade of hard, hard work go down the drain. We're not finished with this program yet. We're not finished developing it. We need the support. Everything I've said to you, I've clearly stated to administrators, we need extra teachers. We should not have self-contained classrooms for immersion. That's not immersion. Thank you.
I have a quick question. We have a person who would like to speak, but is at home quarantining and was not able to come. Is it possible to let her speak through my computer to the board tonight?
That's a new one. Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me? Testing, testing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. My name is Jane Doherty, D O H E R T Y. I tested positive for COVID yesterday, after two years of masking in front of your children. Thank you for letting me speak. I want to say a couple of quick things. I'm very moved by the conversation I've heard and by the passion on both sides, and I do, as I've said in my public comments, it's very exciting to hear how passionate the families are about this program and how passionate our kids about it. I do think that if our kids knew the reasons why we want to make the program shift, they would be in support. Our kids are in favor of what's fair and what's right and what's just. We just heard a colleague say that she was, she put her thumb down when we took a consensus. For the record, she did not. She said she would not stand in the way, so I want that to be clear. I wish that she had put her thumb down and engaged more if she was as firmly in disagreement. I also want to say that as a Spanish-as-a-second-language student myself, as I've mentioned in public comment, I learned with brilliant teachers beginning in seventh grade, 45 minutes a day, and I am a bilingual, biliterate adult. Many people had rubbish high school and middle school Spanish programs. Paxton will have a brilliant elementary school, Spanish-as-a-second-language program if this goes through. And I guarantee you that what our children will be getting will be world-class language that's going to prepare them way better than I was prepared. And I graduated, placed out of my language requirements in college, got a five on the AP, and had built my life around speaking Spanish and teaching Spanish. That's really all I have to say, other than I really hope that the rifts between us can get resolved, and I want to assure the parents that one parent in particular spoke eloquently about her children's feelings being hurt about this program ending, and she implored that we explain the changes to the children in a gentle way, and I guarantee you that we will. We haven't really had a chance, because if this information was leaked way before it was ready to be presented to families and children, but just know that we value--
Two-minute warning to start time. All right, calling the meeting back to order at 8:38, eight minutes after that. So now we're on to, we're still on eight new business, but we're on topic two, review grades nine through 11, science curriculum adoption, and that's to you, Mr. Russ Lodge.
So this is an information item tonight, and I actually mentioned this, I think it was a month ago, brought it up a little bit, but what happened is the board rolled over in the meantime. We elected new people, and so I felt like I needed to come back and make it an information item again, because we have four or five new people, and so for some of you, it's going to be kind of a repeat, but really what's happened is this last year, we undertook the science adoption at the high school level with grades nine through 12, and we met with department chairs, and we really worked a pretty collaborative effort with the department chairs, Dr. Watson and myself, and we, starting probably in November, December, worked our way through with, all the way around to May. Where we're at now is that all five high schools have selected materials, and what will happen is that in two weeks, we'll come back to you for an action item. So the materials have been on display now in our curriculum department for almost a month, so that's one of the things I wanted to make it last time, is make it public, so people knew that they could go take a look at them. We've made sure that they are, they meet our priority standards, and if you look at page, whatever it is, 68, you will see the priority standards. For those of you who are new, it starts with the national standards, and then it goes down to state standards, and then MCPS adopts our own standards, usually some version of the state and national, and then out of that, we highlight with the help of our teaching staff, and really the majority of it is the teaching staff, what the priority standards are going to be. There's always some ability in the science world, especially at the high school level, to have some controversy with some of those standards, so you might in the next two weeks kind of peruse those a little bit. Next time I come back to you in two weeks, I will have a couple of the department chairs with me, as well as Colleen Wendell, who we contracted with, to help us lead us through the process, and if you've got some questions that want to talk a little more in detail, that would be the time to do that during a board discussion. But right now, it's just an information item. We're ready. We priced it out. We would love to be able to get this approved if you see fit in a couple of weeks, so that we can order materials. It's been a long time since we've had high school science materials. By that, I mean a long time, so people are anxious to get some things. It was interesting, because we gave the high school's autonomy, which is a dangerous thing to do, because you don't know if you can control the money. So Big Sky, see, Hellgate chose Biozone, which is from Australia, and the other Sentinel and Big Sky, along with Sealy, chose Houghton Mifflin Harcourt, HMH. So we've got a, we've got kind of a minimal textbook with digital backing it up, where we've got classroom sets instead of a textbook for every child. Sentinel wanted to go with a textbook for every kid. The other two schools wanted to go with classroom sets. We're doing kind of a variety, where Hellgate's doing a one-year-only purchase. The others, we're looking at six or seven years out, because it's cheaper. Hellgate's going to wait a year to see if they use the digital version more than they do the text, but what we found is a lot of the teacher additions have PDFs that you can move into your already-made materials. It was an interesting discussion, because all of our science teachers at the high school level have their own materials. They've had to over the last 10 years. So they wanted to make sure that what they've developed and what we're purchasing can blend, and can they easily move assessments and materials in and out of what they want to create. So the plan is really to order these materials if you see fit in the first part of July. I think we can get them in mid-August, and then high school teachers just wanted a chance to look at them. They didn't want professional development that was intense right off the bat, because it's been a long time. They just wanted to use them a while, because they've been doing their own materials. So kind of the thought was, let's wait till the spring, and if we need to bring in the publishers and get more specific PD, we can do it at that time. But the process was well-received. I think you'll hear that from the department chairs. It went through really well. I think people got what they wanted in each individual school, kind of an equity discussion again. We followed the standards. We met those priority standards, but we're actually going to go through it with two different companies to get that accomplished. So this is just an information item for you tonight, but I would encourage you to read through the priority standards, because there's always controversy in this. There could be. I mean, maybe we'll hear from some of our public, but climate change, evolution, all those kinds of things are in those standards, and our department chairs will be able to answer specifically questions if you have them in those areas or any other. So just prepping you for two weeks from now, when I come back with those folks and we have a more detailed discussion, if you'd like to do that. So just information for tonight.
July 19th.
No, June 28th.
June, two weeks. I'm ahead of the.
He's got you programmed for the 19th. So, and that, by the way, will be my first time sitting over there, and I don't know where Dr. Watson's going to be, probably. I know he's not on the golf course, because I tried to get him there, but he would be somewhere else besides here, so.
In the audience.
So for information only, do we have opportunity to ask you questions? Or is it?
Absolutely.
So any questions for Mr. Lodge by any trustee Mercer?
Just kind of preview once. On the elementary one, there was just no discussion of money, so I'm kind of curious about the money, not now, but in the future, like what these are costing. And then I have questions, not now, but I guess next time, about this doing it differently by buildings, and given tonight's conversation, does that mean that Sentinel's locked into that? Or is the whole thing approved, and they could use the other one anytime they want, because they're both approved? Or can they only use this? Yeah.
Because of the money, these things are not cheap, so we're spending quite, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. So Sentinel and their staff, I mean, this has been not only the chairs, and they've gone back and worked with everybody in those departments. Remember, we only did biology and earth and space. Those are the two required courses at the high school level. We've still got chemistry and physics and all the rest that they can look at down the road, but no, we would not switch gears. We're not going to go back and push a $200,000 purchase to the side and then have to buy another $100,000, and they're well aware of that. So this was the autonomy that they wanted and they were looking for. Different cultures in each school, different approaches, different departments, but very confident in their ability and confident, and they understood perfectly that the priority standards is really where our heart and soul is. We have to follow those, so that's the autonomy that we agreed to. Anybody else?
Trustee Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I looked at the materials, and you just mentioned it was life science and geo, whatever, but I thought I saw there was some physics materials there as well.
Yeah, so earth and space science, which is taught at the ninth grade, has components of physics and chemistry in it, so you'll see some of that in there. Russ pointed this out, but we focused on those two years, because those are the only two required years. We have a large percentage of kids that do take that third year of chemistry, so we'll have to come back to you next year with the recommendation for chemistry and physics.
Trustee Decker.
This is probably not the time for a broad discussion, but I do remember that when we had the painful process around ELA a couple of years ago, one of the real priorities was to try to get everybody on the same page, like kind of literally, and that the ELA adoption that was being pursued at that time was very much about trying to make sure that grade-level teams between buildings could be sharing professional development and that PLCs would make sense in that way, and that people wouldn't be kind of doing their own thing. It sounds to me like this is maybe a bit of a middle ground, in that the standards have been sort of like recommitted or deepened to, everybody's using the same standards, but will there be any potential like challenges or loss of economy of scale in having two different sets of materials being used at different schools?
You know, I'm not worried about that. Remember at Big Sky, we, for years and years, they've taught integrated, so they're combining the two topics together in their delivery model. The others have taught them separately. I really think if the priority standards are covered with fidelity and people understand, and that we're monitoring that throughout the year with the curriculum department, I don't think we're going to have any problems. I'm really confident that we can do good work with two separate publishers.
All right, seeing no other hands up, so we'll move on the agenda to item number three, topic approved grant applications. Back to you, Mr. Lodge.
So Kristy Roth has worked for the first grant. If you look at page 76, you can see the actual grant application for the Bison program that they'd like to work at our for the Bison program that they'd like to work at our farm. And it's pretty involved. It's a kind of a cross-cultural piece. It would bring some additional workers to the Schoolhouse Meats program. And it would be, of course, again, a local and statewide school lunch program possibility. So this is an interesting one. Christie has been working on it for about six, seven, eight months, and we're just bringing it to you tonight. So I invite you to look at 76 if you'd like to look at some of the details and any questions you might have.
Any questions? Trustee Sherman?
Is this just, the kids go just to help out? Or is this also could be considered a vocational pathway? According to Glassdoor.com, the average pay for meat processors $55,000 annually. So is this something that they could parlay into a career path? Or they're just there doing cleanup work, that kind of stuff?
No, the career path is what we want. Now, I can't tell you that they're in there learning how to be a butcher. But I think we're making the steps to develop that program so that kids get access to the meat lab and learn how to, the certain cuts of meat, and actually put a knife in their hands at times. Right now, they're just doing a lot of boning and cleaning up. But our goal down the road is to make it much more of a pathway, as you just suggested. At the same time, we're, we've got a program with Miles City Community College to have their interns come to us and, and earn their credits and give us some support in that area. So we, we worked a lot at the meat lab this last year to define for ourselves how much meat we can process, who we're going to sell to, who we're going to buy from. And I think we're coming to a much better point. And I think this program will fit in nicely with what they have in mind. So excited. Christie's pretty aggressive. She, she writes grants on a regular basis. And I think this is another one that's going to benefit the farm in general, as well as the meat lab specifically.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion. Moved by trustee Sherman, second by trustee Witt. Any board discussion? Seeing no board discussion, public comment? No public comment. All right, all in favor of the recommended motion, of the recommendation for administration for the grant? All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous to all trustees here, motion passed. Now we're moving on to number three, B, Project Lead the Way. Mr. Lodge?
So this grant is a smaller grant. I think it's $13,000 to $15,000, if I'm not mistaken. This is specific to Big Sky High School. So Big Sky, in the, in the fall of 2024, is going to have four academies at their building. And this is, Project Lead the Way is going to allow them to offer the, I think it's an engineering pathway. And so this, again, is on page 79, I think. We got there already. Four trainings, the annual fees. And they'll begin the 22, 22 school year offering Essentials for Engineering and higher-level courses. So I think this helps $16,000. This will help them get a course off the ground and be part of their academies. So I would encourage you to move this one along. This is, this is Jennifer Courtney, moving her school in a real positive fashion. So I'm glad to support her.
Any questions? Trustee Decker?
I, I think this is the first time that we've actually, as a board, seen the indication of Big Sky moving toward wall-to-wall academies, unless I've missed something at a meeting. And in light of our discussion tonight, I feel like it's really important for us to receive more information about that process and what's happening and how that's going, like yesterday. So that is just something that I flagged when I saw this on the grant application. I, of course, you know, support more at Project Lead the Way. That seems like it's been real successful. But that, this is a pretty big change to just kind of see as a, oh, by the way. And I think we all are going to need a lot of information about it.
I'm glad you brought it up. She would be glad to come in and talk to all of you. She's got a very detailed plan, and she's been working on it for three to four years. And we will put that on the agenda and get her to come and share everything that she's got planned. Remember, it's I B as well as Health Science Academies, but now it's going to roll into all wall-to-wall academies. And I think it's an exciting time for Big Sky. So I'll get Jennifer on the agenda.
And she was on a much more aggressive timeline. And so we had had that planned out when it would come to the board. And she's slowed down quite a bit due to COVID and some other things she's working on. So even though she's been working on it for a number of years, I would say that her rollout has slowed down quite a bit.
Sophie, you want a recommendation, but you want a table?
No, I move that we approve this grant application.
Oh, okay. Just clarifying. The second, second by trustee Hobins. Any board discussion?
I already did that, sorry.
Trustee Mercer?
But you spawned me. But I, so is that a big, I just think everyone needs to think about, is that the type of change that requires board approval? Because if it does, then we need to do it. And if it doesn't, then don't come to us later and say, you got to approve something. It either needs to be, I just... Oh, not the grant. This whole, like, I have no idea what Grace is talking about. I mean, like, the wall-to-wall academy thing, I have no idea what that is. I like engineering, so I'm in favor of this. But I'm just, I just think we should think about how in the weeds we get on this sort of thing or not.
I agree with what you're saying, trustee Mercer, because we want to make sure that there's access to all these educational opportunities for all of our students. And I know that's one of the processes we put in place under Dr. Watson. But I, I do agree. Trustee Walker Andrews?
I was just going to say, but because it's a grant, we still have to approve this grant, right? Okay.
This is only to approve the grant application. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? All right, all in favor for the recommendations submitted? Please raise your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? All right, moving on to eight, B, Finance and Operations Maintenance. Right, is that where we're at?
Yep.
Yep. Not used to these late meetings anymore. All right, so topic one, Transportation Budget Amendment Proclamation. And that's over to you, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So the next three items are budget amendments for some of our adopted funds. It's not uncommon for us to present budget amendments to the board this time of year for your consideration. We can propose and adopt budget amendments anytime during the school fiscal year. It's typically done at this time when we have a better idea where our budgets sit. We're fiscal year-end of June 30. And so this is where we kind of see where we, where we stand. And so in addition to adopting budget amendments at any time during the fiscal year, it's done by resolution of the board. And the first step in that process is for the board to proclaim the need for a budget amendment. We post that and publish it. And then, next board meeting, you would come back and approve the resolution authorizing it. So this is the first step in the process. And I can talk about the, the first one, which is a transportation budget amendment for the elementary district. So the, the proposed budget amendment is $225,000. And what, what this budget amendment relates to is unanticipated increase in costs for our transportation fund. Those increased costs relate to increases in gas prices this last semester in particular. We also are purchasing required extended stop arms. And when we set our budgets back in August, or the board set their budgets, we did so with the reduction in routes from 58 to 40, 54 routes. And so that reduced the cost or anticipated cost. But during the year, when we started changing to bell time, different bell times, we increased minutes. And so the increase in minutes per day actually boosted the cost. Not as much as four routes, but that was a boost in cost. So we would pull these funds out of our reserves, our elementary fund reserves, and boost the budget in order to, in the year, expending within our budget. So that's, that's the purpose for this first budget amendment.
Any questions for Mr. McHugh on one? Because then we'll just go one by one and vote on. Trustee Vogel?
Could you explain what the safety arms are? Is that the thing that comes out in the front?
It is on the side, right next to the driver's door. It used to just be a stop arm, but the legislature required school buses to include a 54-inch arm in addition to the stop sign. So you'll see a lot of buses around town have that installed already with lights. And so we're obligated to pay for that. So Beach went ahead, took care of the installation, and we'll be paying Beach for those stop arms.
Trustee Decker?
What, like, roughly, what does $225,000 reflect in terms of our overall transportation budget? Is that a really large percentage to have to adjust, or is it small?
It's small. So our elementary budget's $4.5 million approximately. And our reserves are $500,000. So we're pulling from reserves of $500,000 to cover that $225,000 increased obligation. And so we, when we adopted budgets in August, we did so by re-appropriating some billing reserve, or, sorry, some reserves from our transportation fund. And so our reserves in the elementary are not, you know, that high. They can be as much as 20%. They're about 11%. And so there's, there's certainly funds available to cover it. And whatever we don't use for this expenditure stays right in the transportation fund, and we'll restore the reserves.
Seeing no other hands up for questions, we'll move forward with a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for a Budget Amendment Proclamation 2022-9 in amount of $225,000. Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Hobins. Board discussion? Public comment? All right, all elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please raise your, indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees here. Moving on to topic two, which is also elementary action item. Mr. McHugh?
So this is a retirement fund budget amendment. And the retirement fund covers obligations for staff unemployment insurance, social security, and retirement contributions. So this, this amounts to about 17% of salary and wages that we pay. We pay through the retirement fund. And if you, and this, this resolution's on page 81, I should have mentioned. So the parameters are still the same. We're asking the board to make the proclamation for a resolution to approve a budget amendment. The reason for this budget amendment is we had additional retirees. And so retirement contributions or retirement obligations are also funded out of this retirement fund. So that's sort of the severance obligations that, that happen. And we budget a certain amount, but sometimes when, when retirements happen, they're, they're more costly if there are a greater number of retirements. The other issue, and this is a little misleading in the background, I reference an increase in the number of staff paid with non-federal funds. That's not itself a reason for the, the budget amendment, but it's, it's the source of it. So when we adopted budgets in August, federally-funded positions also fund the, these obligations, these retirement fund obligations, this 17%. So it's not funded through the retirement fund. As we approach the end of the year, however, it's possible that we'll move some of the federally-funded positions to the general fund, just as a, as a planning device or a planning opportunity. So this budget amendment gives Rob and the accounting office, myself, the flexibility to, to move, adjust the, the source of the salary between the federal funds or the general fund, which has an impact on the retirement fund budget. So for this item and the next budget item, we're proposing these budget amendments. The budget as adopted in the elementary was $5.8 million for the retirement fund. We're talking about a budget amendment of $400,000. The reserves are about $1.2 million. That's about 20% on the elementary side.
Any questions for Mr. McHugh? Seeing none?
Oh, excuse me, Chair, old person, I'm sorry. There's another item I wanted to point out on page 81. The second paragraph to the end references high school retirement fund. And that will need to be corrected to reflect elementary retirement fund. So when you make your motion, if you could mention that correction, thanks.
All right, we able to find it? Page 81, the second to the last, therefore be resolved?
Exactly. So three lines down, it references an amendment to the high school retirement fund, and it should be the elementary.
All right, so for, looking for a motion for the recommendation of approval of the Budget Amendment Proclamation 2022-10 in amount of $400,000 for the elementary retirement fund with the corrected resolution stated in elementary. Is there a motion? Motion by trustee Decker, second by Nancy, by trustee Hobins. Any board discussion? Any public comment? All right, all elementary trustees in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by raising your hand. All elementary trustees in favor of the recommendation? Motion pass. Now we're on to topic three, which is the High School Retirement Fund Budget Amendment Proclamation 2022-8. Back to you, Mr. McHugh.
The only thing I'd add is that this budget was adopted at $4.5 million, and the reserves are also 20%, which for this one is about $900,000. But, but same, same rationale is for the elementary.
All right, incorrect resolution wording?
We're good here, thanks.
All right, any questions for Mr. McHugh on his high school part? Trustee Walker Andrews?
I know that this happens all the time, but I'm wondering, are retirements up? Or is it just the usual flux?
Retirements are up, but the biggest impact is just the, the, the number of positions paid with federal funds and the retirement impact for any movement of those, of those positions to the general fund.
All right, is there a motion for the recommendation of the Budget Amendment to Proclamation 2022-8 in amount of $400,000 in the high school retirement fund? Moved by trustee Walker Andrews, second by trustee Hobins. I almost said trustee Nancy. Any board discussion? Any public comment? All right. All trustees in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Moving on to topic number four, Approved Beach Transportation Contract Addendum. Mr. McHugh?
All right, so I would first like to thank our team of negotiators, Burley McWilliams, who's our director of facilities and maintenance, Russ Lodge, our assistant superintendent, and Terry Phalen, our transportation and operations coordinator. We also had trustee F. Garrison on our team, so we appreciate his participation. The, the background outlines the proposed addendum to the Beach Transportation Contract. The, we are currently operating under a five-year agreement. The, we are currently operating under a five-year agreement with Beach Transportation. The fourth year, this upcoming year, we did not have rates agreed to, so that was left open for our negotiations this year. We negotiated rate increase, a rate increase of 11.3% to line items one, two, three, five, six, and nine of Schedule One. And that schedule is attached to the addendum, which is, which begins on page eighty-three. The other change, the other negotiated increase was a, a retention incentive for Beach staff that continue to support MCPS at the end of this school year and then in the fall. And that's a $500 incentive to those Beach staff members. And, and just a little about that, the, we provided a $500 retention incentive for hourly staff, and this sort of mirrors that same concept, where we're recognizing a limited number of staff at, at Beach Transportation that continued to serve MCPS through the year and then into next year. And, and Beach was not at all immune to staffing issues. And they've always had a very loyal following of drivers and employees. And I think this is probably the first year that I really heard panic in their voices about staffing and about ability to staff busing. And, and, and so this is recognition of those folks that, that really did hang in there on our behalf. And, and to their credit, they, they did not miss a route. And, and so many times, it wasn't, it was the, the consistent drivers, and it was also the other, the mechanics, the office folks, and the other family members of, of the Beach family that, that drove, drove buses for us and for our kids. So it was, it was a difficult year that they're hoping to address, and we are hoping to address in the form of this, this proposed settlement, which is significant in comparison to prior settlements. And, but what the focus is, is on wages. And so the 11.3% increase also comes with some language that's in the addendum, specifically that, that there are minimum increases to route driver wages of $5 per hour and attendance of $3 per hour. So these are significant bumps. If you look at the, the addendum, you'll see that the bus driver, route driver pay would go from sixteen to 1650, all the way up to twenty-one to twenty, twenty-one fifty. Trustee Afgharass did some research on our behalf, and it really confirmed sort of the, the wages that are out there for CDLs. And you need to be a CDL to drive buses. And, and I think you don't have to go beyond the borders of Montana and other school districts to see the difficulties other districts have had in getting bus drivers. So the intent of this provision is to ensure that really this sizable increase is directed and, and Bus, or Beach fully supports its direction towards staff and staff pay. So that's, that's the most significant component of the increases is in support of their, their staff and their staff pay. And, and it's typical that when we negotiate, we negotiate a, a new five-year contract. We did not do that this year. And, and part of it is, is reservation just about how well this does in terms of supporting the, the increase in route drivers for next year. Also incorporated in this, this addendum is some changes to the activity driver rates. And similar to route rates, we provided for a minimum increase of $5 per hour there as well. Interestingly, a lot of activity drivers are paid at $14 per hour, so they're paid less than the route drivers. And part of that is, it's, we fund activities through the general fund. And during a number of years, we've, we've frozen those increases because of the condition of the general fund. And, and in those cases, Beach froze some, some wages. And so, I mean, you could have a driver make $16 going to and from school for our kids, and then jump in the bus and go to billings and, and be paid at a lower rate. So their intent is to make those rates more equivalent across the board, which is a, a good, good, good purpose, good focus. So that's the other piece that's incorporated within the addendum, the other one of significance. And again, would like to thank, thank our negotiating team. Burley McWilliams is here, and he's been involved with transportation for, for most of his time with the district. So he and I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions? Trustee Decker?
I'm curious about what the to, like roughly, the total cost increase from this past year to next year is. And I'm also curious about the total financial impact of that $500 bonus being paid by the district. So both of those two pieces.
So first, with the, the, the $500 incentive, that's, is forty-two-five broken into two payments. So that's what we looked at as two payments, 250 in June and 250 in, in October. And so between the two, it's about $85,000. It represents about 0.69% of the increase. The, the dollar increase is right around, well, we, we pegged it at $733,000. So I give Terry Phelan a lot of credit because we dove into a lot of detail here. And so he did a lot of the, the number crunching for our team and, and really spent a lot of time sharing data with, with Beach and vice versa. And so we were really looking at total hours that are spent by drivers and by sub-drivers, which are also part of the package, driving these routes back and forth. So we, it was, it was broken down in pretty fine detail. The, so that's what the total estimated cost increase will be.
And can you remind me, when we do our estimates on kind of buses in general, I know there's a figure that's like, a bus route costs X to the district? Because this came up a lot when we were talking about late starts.
It did, yeah. And so you have the Schedule One attached to the addendum. The main cost is that, that first line item, line item one. But rolled into all of the route costs, you're looking at about $45,000. Now, the, the various other line items also factor into how expensive the routes are, because if they go over a certain, if they go over three hours, then they're gonna, you're gonna have excess hourly charges. And, I mean, there's some other factors, but I think generally that's where we look. Burley, you want to elaborate?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add is if it had an aid. So like an aid with a route is right around $55,000 square, or $5,000 per route. So as Pat said, it depends on how long the route goes. On Schedule One, Item One is based on a three-hour rate, or route rate, and then there's excessive charges after that. And I believe, I'm sorry, I believe most of our routes are right at four hours. Like 60% of our routes are at four hours.
It's just so frustrating. I mean, we, we weren't able, it feels so difficult to find the funding to do what we want to with the buses. And yet we have to pay more for, you know? So that's a, I feel like we, we need, it sounds, I'm not knocking the work of the team, because certainly, I don't know one thing that's not more expensive right now than it has ever been before, right? But it's really challenging, because the, the need to add routes, and I only, I think it was like, less than 10 routes to get to where we wanted to be with middle school, starting at a reasonable hour, would be half the cost of what we have to now pay just to increase and keep doing what we are doing. Like, that's really frustrating.
And trustee Decker, you're totally right. The, the difference will be going forward, the cost of those routes will be more. And, and the reason that they'll be more is because the market for drivers is where it's at. And, and it's certainly possible, and we, we also supported the one-year look, because I don't think anybody has a crystal ball to say where things are going to go. So we hope that we're sitting in a better spot next year, because we will be talking about this again next year.
Trustee Mercer?
So I find this so weird, this whole relationship, but because we're giving raises, we're directly deciding to give raises to someone else's employees that drastically outpace, I think, anything we gave to our own. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But are you then sure that all this money is going to employees? Are they getting, and my second question is, if we refuse this, what would happen?
I, I would answer yes to the first. We don't, we don't, but we don't look at timesheets. I mean, we're, we're going to this extent, but we're not diving into their financial statements. We are, we do know from billing just how many hours are expended driving routes, and we can, we can capture that as a cost. If they can't fill a route because there's not a driver, we don't pay for the route. And so we also know, based upon this language, that this increase is, is intended to meet that bus driver pay, that bus driver obligation. It's not going to be a mystery, and they're, I mean, they've communicated to their staff the retention bonus and this boost in pay. And it's, and it's, and it's essentially intended to ensure that they can plan for the staff members to be back in the fall, and also promote the potential for other staff members to come in. And then, so I guess I'm confident there, and I'm sorry, I forgot your second. Yeah, and I, I think what I would say is that the proposed increase that we are talking about to really meet the need was, was substantially more than what we're talking about here. And we landed at this rate, because when you increase revenue for a transportation contractor by more than 12% from one year to the next, you have to bid it. And, and we have a, you know, a business, a company that's, that's been serving us for 80 years, that has met our route needs as compared to other districts that have not. So we want them serving our needs, because they've done a good job doing that. And so I, I defer to Russ and Burley, who are here. I think they're using this year to figure out if they can keep it rolling. So I think it's, it's, it's a settlement that, that keeps them working for us, which is important. And I think, I think it's something they want to continue to do, but I, as I mentioned, I hear fear in their voice.
One thing I'll add is, I mean, everything Pat said, this, it was a unique negotiation. This is my third or fourth negotiation I've had with Beach, and this is probably the most scary I felt in regards to potentially losing, losing a busing contractor so late in the year as well. The one thing I'll add in regards to your first question is, about 10% of that 11.3 is, covers just the increase to the drivers and the attendance. So there's not a profit in it. And that was a big discussion with the committee, was that this wasn't a profit center, that we're not looking at, we're all kind of tightening our belts, so to speak, right now. And we made that pretty clear, and, and they agreed.
Trustee Sherman?
Who researches and maps out these routes? And what steps are taken to ensure their maximum efficiency? And how often, because I know when you, I mean, houses are being built all over the place, so they have to adjust those routes and change them. How often do they look at that?
Yeah, it's a good question. We have a, a software program that they operate on our behalf. And that software program is intended to establish efficiencies in, in, in transportation. And we've also used that software company independently for some of the bell time study work that we've done, and some of the other evaluations of, of options. And, and really, they, they know the routes very well. And I say they, I mean Scott Beach. And he really does an excellent job managing the, the routes, managing the software. Burley and now Terry Phelan are, are the two guys that, that monitor those on our behalf. And Burley, you want to add anything there?
Well, to say the most recent bell times, we went through it pretty, pretty detailed. And if I remember right, the routing company, which was, actually had Roar Route, they thought we needed more routes to do our new bell study, and then, and Beach actually broke it down even more, where we had less routes. So we work with them quite a bit to ensure routes are, you know, efficient. That's the word I was thinking of, or thank you. And, and we look at it, we've talked about it, even with this, in this committee, we've talked about how we can go back and look at routing again, and where, where we can reduce some routes, where we can maybe have some central pickups to reduce some routes, to reduce some of these costs. And then, you know, we'll add attendance to our bus routes as well, as we have either behavior problems or, or whatever there may be. Well, over the years, those change, and, and so we want to go back and reevaluate those as well. So it's something we'll do every couple of years with that.
Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for fiscal year '23 rates with Beach Transportation, as outlined above, and approve the addendum number four attached? Moved by trustee Hobins. Seconded by, Ms. trustee Witt. All trustees in favor, indicate by raising your hand. Oh, look at my cheat sheet. Public comment, please.
I, Casey Baloo, you know me, I, I think I've been here before. I, I think our bus drivers are super important. I'm excited to see raises for them and for the bus aides. I think the hardest part to stomach is that our classified staff is also super important to the running of our schools, our paras, our custodians. And they got a $1.10 an hour raise. That just strikes me as, that's hard.
Hi. Melanie Charleston, M-E-L-A-N-I-E-C-H-A-R-L-S-O-N. I'm a retiree of Missoula County Public Schools. For those of you who do not know me, I worked for the district for 28 years. The last seven were as Missoula EA president, Casey's position. I am in my fourth year, serving this, your certified and your classified staff as their field consultant for the Montana Federation of Public Employees. I sat in on both the classified and the certified negotiations, and I stayed here this evening specifically for the Missoula EA, but I'm really glad I heard this. I am shocked that you're looking at a $5 raise for private employees, where you're provided $1.10 for your classified employees. I can, I can hear Sheri and Carleen Hathaway right now in my head, and they would be appalled as, as am I. Yes, the classifieds received a $500 bonus stipend, whatever you'd like to call it, through ESAR funds. I did not hear that ESAR funds would be utilized for this $500 to private company employees. $85,000 likely would have bought close to another quarter of a percent for your certified employees. If Beach is going to use this next year to look at whether they can maintain services to this district, I highly suggest that this district looked at providing your own bus services. I would happily support those public employee bus drivers. Other districts do employ their own bus drivers, including Kalispell. Thanks.
Any more public comment? All right. We'll move on. All those in favor of the recommendation of the motion on the table, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. So let's do oppose first, then. Sorry. Those opposed, trustee Mercer and trustee Wallach, oppose. Everybody else was in agreement for the motion. Motion passes. All right. All right, now we're on to topic four, five, the multi-district year-end funding. Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So, this is a recurring agenda item for this, this time of year, when we're evaluating our, our year-end expenditures in our general fund. And what the intent of this provision is, is to allow Dr. Watson and myself to, to look at planning and preservation options within the general fund. One of the, one of the tools that we've used is the inter-local agreement through the multi-district agreement, this is the inter-local fund, excuse me, through the multi-district agreement. And it allows school districts to, to preserve within the inter-local fund unexpended general fund dollars, and preserve them to expend in future years. So, there historically has not been a, a great opportunity or option for schools to make preservation of funds, and so this is, this is one of them. We also evaluate expenditures during the year that are made through our indirect cost reimbursement, our Medicaid billing, and, and we evaluate whether we can retain and, and restore those funds. So, that's part of that process as well. When we recap our year-end, we'll share with the board just, you know, how that transaction's happened, how it, how it played out at the end of the year, and that's, that's part of our year-end recap that we share in July or August. So, happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? We'll do it in two motions, the elementary and then the secondary. All right, seen no one for questions. A motion for the elementary recommendation to transfer fiscal year 2021-22 cash balances and expenditure, expenditures between elementary funds, as it deems necessary to ensure the efficient use of school district resources in accordance with board policy, the district multi-district agreement 20-3-365 MCA and 20-9-208 MCA. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Mercer, second. Second by trustee Hobbins. Any board discussion? Seen none. Any public comment? Seen none. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand? Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now on to the secondary recommendation. Is there a motion to authorize administration to transfer fiscal year 2021-22 cash balances and expenditures between secondary funds, as it deems necessary to ensure the efficient use of school district resources in accordance with board policy, the district's multi-district agreement 20-3-365 MCA and 20-9-208 MCA? Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Walker Andrews, a second. Second by trustee Wallach. Any board discussion? Seen none. Any public comment? Seen none. All those in favor for the recommendation, please indicate by raising your hand? Unanimous to all trustees present. Now on to topic six, approved purchase of student and staff device replacements. Mr. McHugh.
All right, so it was about two months ago that the, that we brought before the board the intent to apply for this emergency connectivity funds that would be used to purchase student and staff devices, laptops and Chromebooks. It's, it's likely that the full funding anticipated will not come to our direction, and, and it's, it's a matter of the demands on those dollars being greater than what, than, than what's available. So, what we're asking the board to do is approve these purchases through the technology fund, and then to offset that cost, once we determine and learn how much, if any, emergency connectivity funds will receive. So, we want to proceed with the purchases proposed and outlined in the, the agenda. The 1,779 student Chromebooks and the 203 staff laptops.
Any questions for Mr. McHugh? Trustee Sherman?
Can you explain me why we need that many laptops? Are we doing all of our schoolwork on laptops, or?
Yeah, so we, we initiated a one-to-one computing ratio, and so, part of it is, is meeting that need, and then part of it is, is just the replacement schedule. And the bulk of it is the replacement schedule for student laptops and Chromebooks. And, and what we, I mean, compared to what we've purchased for student computer labs in the past, we're looking at $339 a device. So, it is a significant outlay, and multiple, we expect there's, that still bulk of it will be funded with these emergency connectivity funds. But we get so much further with a Chromebook purchase than we ever did when we were purchasing the desktops for the computer labs. And it, and it meets the, the one-to-one computing ratio that we've been working on.
And what's the average life expectancy of a Chromebook?
There are five years.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite finished. So, the, this one-to-one, that's, so every student has a Chromebook, or just every student has a Chromebook while they're in this computer lab?
They have it available, yeah, a device.
So, there's always a device available. So, basically, it's a computer per student?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah. And it was a significant need when we were in remote learning, or in the hybrid learning model, that, that students had access to devices, and, because it's not all do. And so, many of the, many of those devices went home with students during remote learning and during our online academy.
Right, I do remember the memos being sent out on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seen none. Is there a motion for the recommendation that approve the purchase of student and staff device replacements for, from information technology corps for $757, $361? Motion by trustee Hobbins? Second by trustee Decker? Any board discussion? Trustee Andrew Walker Andrews?
I just had a quick question again. So, we have approximately 10,000 students, and how many staff?
Well, we, certified staff, we have about 787.
9,000 students, okay. I was just looking at the proportion of how many we have to replace at a time, that was all.
No other board discussion, public comment? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand? All except for trustee Sherman in favor of. Any, all those opposed? Trustee Sherman, one, one opposed. Motion passes. On to topic C, personnel negotiation and policy. Approved personnel report, trustee, Mr. Lodge?
You know, I've been coached by our esteemed HR director, Dave Roth, to tell you that this is a routine monthly personnel report, both on the elementary and secondary side.
Any questions? Usually, we don't go into discussion, but we do have that option. A motion for an elementary recommendation to approve the items on the provided elementary personnel report? Moved by trustee Hobbins, second by trustee Decker. There's usually no public comment, but we do have option. All right. All elementary trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand? Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now on to the secondary recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the items on the provided high school personnel report? Moved by trustee Sherman, second by trustee Walker Andrews? Any more discussion? We usually don't, public comment? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand? All the, okay. Unanimous to all trustees present. Topic two, ratify the two-year agreement with MEA MFPE. Mr. McHugh?
All right, thank you. I'm also pitch hitting for David Roth. First, I'd like to thank the team, the, on the district side, and David Roth was our fearless leader, trustee Mercer participated, and Vinnie Jamona and myself. We always appreciate working with our colleagues from MEA MFPE, and this is the proposed settlement that we're presenting tonight, which involves a percentage increase for next year and the following year. It's a two-year contract, along with a compression to the salary schedule, which might be a little less intuitive. And, and so we've attached the salary schedules beginning on page 102. And page 102 reflects our current salary schedule, and this is a 23-step salary schedule. And compression involves the, the reduction in the number of steps. And so, I, I think the salary schedule was, was 30 years when I started with the district, or we, or maybe it was, it just moved from 30, but there's been several attempts, and there's also been several successful efforts at, at shrinking the number of steps and, and reducing the steps to, to, for a professional to move from the starting pay to the highest pay on the salary schedule. This, this process involved evaluating the, the salary schedule itself, and, and recognizing through some of the work of Melanie Charleston, the, the, the steps within the salary schedule that have sort of the, the lower increases from one step to the other. And so, the, the steps at, at play on the current salary schedule are under, really, the positions affected, I should say, if you look on page 102, are under the BA 45, BA 30 column, it's in the middle lane, and, or in the middle of that, that, that page. And down to step 11 is where some of this compression impact happened. And at step 11, and then going forward to step 23, the steps between those cells were, were, were smaller. And so, what, what was developed and, and what Melanie put together was, was a consistent step increase as you progress through those steps. And, and so what that means is, if you look at step one through step 11, the increase is by 4.4%. And then, when you hit step 11, it was, it was sporadic, but now would be a consistent 2.98 or 2.99, I believe, percent. The other column that's affected is MA 45, so this is at the far right of the salary schedule. And similarly, there were steps beginning at step 16 that were also lower increases, and the fact that they represented lower increases meant that the, the, the compression of those steps could happen with a, a lower financial cost, or overall financial cost. And so, the steps one through, through 15 on column eight, the MA 45 column, the far column to the right, the increase is 5.45%, and then the, then we went to a more consistent increase of 4.94 for, for the final three steps. The, the compression is, is very much focused, as mentioned, on those various cells. So, the positions in those cells would be the primary ones that are impacted. And as, but the move to an 18-step schedule provides for higher lifetime earnings and the opportunity for a professional to move to the highest paid step in their, in their salary schedule at a, at a faster pace. So, the, the additional item that's reflected here on page, page 99 of the attachment, in addition to the compression, the 1.75% increase on the base next year, and the 1.5% increase in the following year, is a, is a stipend that you'll see referenced, the $2,000 stipend for center-based special education programs, and $1,000 for special education resource rooms. Those are additional stipends. These are positions that are difficult to fill in our district, and so we negotiated that increase in that additional stipend. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Seen none. Trustee Sherman?
So, the raise that we're giving our teachers is 1.75%?
That's correct.
After we just approved a, a bus driver one for 25%? That's all offensive, really. And I mean, I know that you guys put a lot of time into this, but are, according to Indeed.com, our starting teacher pay in Montana is $17.38 an hour. That's, you can make more, make it work in at Panera.
That's, sorry, that's not our starting pay. I'm sorry.
Okay, what is our starting pay? Per hour?
Yeah, if you look on, on page... 102. The salary's $39,722.
Okay.
Are you answering?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. After this, then trustee Witcher?
Doing math. I know. So, using the 187 day and eight hours a day, that's, that's $2,655 for the starting salary, 2,655 per hour.
Okay.
And the average pay for our district's around $55,000?
All right, trustee Witcher?
Um, I, first of all, I, I think all staff at MCPS should see significant raises, this, that, notwithstanding. But the bus driver contract that we just passed, that is, does not include any benefits, correct?
They, they'll pay for benefits with the dollar increase. What we showed you was not.
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah, so there's that piece of it, so it's not comparing it directly, the two things. And also, our budget that we take out of is a transportation budget that pays for that, and what we pay the other staff is taken out of a separate budget, correct?
That's correct.
So, again, the different process. So, it's just not, I say this to bring to light that it's not compare, they're all fruit, but it's comparing apples and bananas.
I agree with that.
Trustee Decker?
Were, were the negotiations satisfactory to everyone's, like, did people come away feeling like this had gone well?
You know, I really like the people that I negotiate. You know, I really like the people that I negotiate with on our team. And I like the people that negotiate on the other side very well. And I don't think you walk away feeling great. I mean, I think that's probably a sign of a decent settlement because I've, I know I had some sleepless nights about the compression. And, but I, I think there's a lot of mutual respect. And I think, I mean, I'll be interested to see what Casey has to say. But I, I think so.
So let's, hold on, public comment. Any more questions for Mr. McHugh? Trustee Mercer?
Just for context, are we... We don't have the current revenue to pay for this, is that correct? We are borrowing from ESAR to pay for this? That's maybe a bad way to put it. But this is more than we can do in some ways.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, so we adopted budgets this year for FY '22 with going into reliance upon ESAR, which we're allowed to do based upon the economic impact, based upon the fact that we didn't run levies, based upon the fact that there's enrollment impacts. And so what ESAR or ARP allowed was, to the extent practicable, that you keep staff employed. And so that's correct. So we counted on a little over 2 million in the elementary and a little over 1.4 in the high school to balance our budgets. So those will have positions paid for with ESAR funds this year and, and next year, and then the, likely the following year, just to, just to make, make it work.
Trustee Witt?
I know we kind of covered this in the training a little bit about school finance and the budgetary process and max budget and base budget. And then state law stuff with, like, inflation being like 7%, 8%. Can you explain why we're not able to even do that at all with our budgets?
Yeah, so our inflationary increase going into next year is 2.57%. And then we apply that factor to a number of components in the school funding formula, not the least of which is enrollment. And enrollment in the elementary district is, is not growing like it is in the high school. And so that affects, affects our budgets.
Well, and specifically, when you say our inflationary increase is this, that's not something you decided. That was state legislature, correct?
That's right. And state law currently caps it at 3%. So going into next legislative session, the max each year we're hoping for under current law is 3% absent changes to current law.
Trustee Decker?
So it's my understanding that wages in Montana in every field are low in the nation and that teacher pay is among the very lowest in the entire nation, in Montana. So with that as kind of a given, based on what our legislature sees fit to provide to districts to be able to pay for stuff, where does Missoula sit in terms of teacher pay in comparison to the other AA-type districts and other districts of our size?
You know, I'm not sure. I think Dave might have a better idea. I know that the settlements from around the state for next year were in the 1.5% to 2%. But I don't know the relative comparison. It's really hard to compare salary schedules, one district to another, because of all the language that appears in a collective bargaining agreement. And then, and you don't necessarily know from looking at the salary schedule how, um... How it is that people move through the salary schedule? You know, the ease at which they move through the salary schedule. So it is good to compare, but it's not always easy to do so. And that, that goes for virtually any contract that we negotiate and try to compare. But the percentage increases that we're proposing are in line with the AA districts in terms of what they were providing.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the ratify of the two-year agreement with MEA MFPE with appreciation to the district and MEA MFPE teams? Moved by trustee Mercer, second by trustee Hobins. Any board discussion? Trustee Mercer?
I just, I am financially scared, basically. I think the, like, the $700,000 we just spent on laptops, I think three, four years from now, we're not going to be doing that. I think we have a cliff coming because unless the legislature does the right thing, which maybe they will, but if they don't, and if enrollment doesn't go up, two years from now, I think we're making choices about, do we keep those art teachers in the elementary school or not? So I think our teachers are clearly worth more than this. I don't think we even have this much.
Any other? Trustee Witt?
Yeah, I just want to express my frustration with it all because, yeah, they, this is too low. And I feel hamstrung completely by the way school funding is done. And there's just not much that can be done at this setting. And the fact that we have a max budget that is determined in such a weird way is really limiting.
Trustee Decker?
I think it's important for people, all of the millions of people who are clearly still watching the meeting at this point, to understand that the laptops that we just approved are A, paid for out of a technology fund, and B, going to be paid for through another means that just hasn't actually come in yet. So we're literally not spending the same money to do that decision. And I think those are the kinds of things that it's really easy for people to get kind of sideways about. Now, if, if we want to talk about changing the way that those funds are set up, that's a state thing. But we're really not, like, spending money on laptops rather than teachers, at least not at the board level, we're not. And so I just want to really set the record real clear on that because no one in this room is making a decision that laptops are more important than teachers.
Bad example, sorry.
All right, any other board discussion? Seeing none. Public comment?
Oh, I'm happy to weigh in on this one. Casey Blue, MEA president. I, I'll try to address some of the things that came up. And you'll just wave at me if I miss something, I am sure, because that would not be a direct interaction. We were, we were always happy to sit down with the amazing team from MCPS and negotiate and shake our fingers at them and have them do the same back and forth. We had an amazing team as well. Mary Lyons is our lead negotiator. Michelle Beatty, Scott Shook, and Shan and Judge and I also got to sit at the table for numerous sessions. We were happy to meet after school so that we wouldn't have to, you know, have our negotiations team do subplans and have to worry about sub shortages and not having any coverage for their rooms. So we appreciate the district doing that for us. We left feeling frustrated as well. I mean, and Pat put it quite well. You know, negotiations are supposed to come out with both sides feeling just a little bit, a little bit gnarly about things still, but coming back to work together in, in coming years. We do, we talked a lot at the table about making sure that we together work, along with Dr. Watson, who will be in Helena watching out and giving us the call when it's time to lobby together for some of those changes to state law around school funding, so that we can have a better conversation two years from now and a little more money perhaps to work with. And we appreciate that you say teachers are worth more. We, we love our jobs and we do enjoy getting paid and, you know, having a place to live and putting food on the table. A lot of these negotiated items set us up to make sure that we can retain some of the amazing staff members that we have in the district. Compression is something that we've talked about. Now, this was our third negotiation cycle, talking about compression and trying to figure out how to do it. Melanie Charleston is a true champion and amazing mind. She and Pat sat together for three days and delved into the numbers and looked at all sorts of things and then helped us to make sure that we could educate our staff on how that looked and how compression works. We've got a great FAQ, if you ever want to see it and learn how compression works, we're, we're happy to share it. We did a lot of, thanks to Pat, sharing of documents and talking about, you know, deficit spending, which we heard a lot at the table, and just educating our members on how that 3% cap works and how, you know, two years ago, the legislature decided how much funding increase we would have for this coming year. There were a lot, a lot of questions throughout our process. And we had members come and sit and watch as well. We, what else am I missing? We're very excited about the, the center-based programs and special ed teacher stipends. Those have been centers of focus for our new faculty program that the union and district have partnered with over the last few years. We found that that was a huge area where we saw repeated turnover, and not just people leaving the district, but leaving special, leaving center-based programs to fold into special ed within our district and then leaving special ed to take regular ed jobs. We wanted to make sure that there was something that would leave those amazing professionals in those seats because we know that consistency in those programs is so beneficial to the students and to the rest of the staff in the building. It just makes things much, much better. And we've heard some great feedback from special ed teachers, as well as regular ed teachers, about that win. I'm pretty excited. We opened voting the Friday before the last week of school, after we had a, a member meeting to explain the TA. We left voting open through Tuesday of this last week. And we're happy to say that we had 468 members vote during that last week of school, where everything's a crush and you're just trying to get to your email, if you possibly can, as you do all the things and pack up your room. We passed with an 82.3% ratification vote. Gives us about a 4% margin of error with a 99% certainty, if you're into all the mathy things, because that, that's what I chose to focus on. But yeah, we, as much as, you know, we would have loved to see some additional percentages, we, we realize that there, there's work we have to do to make sure that we can get increased funding. And we're happy to do that with the district in the coming years. I think that's about it. Did I forget anything? Oh, good. Okay. I'll hand over the mic then.
Hi, Melanie Charleston, M-E-L-A-N-I-E-C-H-A-R-L-S-O-N. I'm your MFPE field consultant, representing your certified and classified employees. So just a couple of things. I know it cannot have a dialogue. I do represent all of your feeder districts, except for Dusmet. And yeah, the, the K8s had a little higher percentage. I believe Lolo is sitting at 2.25, Hellgate at 2%. Bonner, I believe, is right in that area as well. So just for some examples. You are right in the midst of the double As. So I do represent Kalispell as well. I have two of the double As. So I think you're now with a new matrix. If this were to be approved this evening, you would be, I think, third of the double As. And Pat is spot on. I mean, it's salary is one thing to compare, but you also have a very solid insurance and trust fund and insurance package. And so I always say, you know, there's other components and benefits within a CBA. And language is also part of those components and very positive language that you have in the CBA as well. And, and again, I give my thanks to the full team. And I really enjoyed doing the math, and that was great. I'm thrilled the comparison went through. It's great three days with you, Mr. McHugh. Thank you for all of that. Happy to talk through the math and the why. So I think the, the index that creates the matrix is now far more equitable than it was prior to this, hopefully, this coming year. Along that line, the reason we, another reason we chose to compression is your feeder districts are all within five to 17 years of steps. And so 23 was really an outlier of steps to attain that high career earning potential. So just a little background. Thank you. I do encourage a yes vote on this one. Thanks.
Seeing no more public comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous to all trustees present. Motion passed. Now we're at more into a laid-back, well, not laid-back. Number nine, board work session. Dr. Watson?
Yeah, and so we're after 10 o'clock. And I think there's a 10 o'clock rule, so I... I, I think that Russ and I need to chat about this. I'd be happy to come back on the 28th and, and get your feedback. Really don't want to try to gather feedback at 10 o'clock at night. But one of the things I want you to look at, and it's on page... Let's see. Starting on page 106 of your agenda. And if you can pull it up online, you can see the, the colored pieces of this. But the, the newest, the newest part of the strategic plan is the strategic objectives. And why this is important to get your feedback on now is that the strategic objectives really guide Russ's work next fall. And so Paul pulled them up on the screen there. So remember that you all approved, as a board, you approved the goal areas. But the strategic objectives are really how we do our work to achieve the goal areas. And so I, just in interest of time and not keeping you all night, I think if you can read through those items, those strategic objectives, and give Russ and I some feedback, that would be beneficial. Because what, what Russ would do in the fall is he would take these strategic objectives out to the various schools and talk to the staff and make sure that, that they're sort of represent the work of the district, just to get another point of clarification. We'd also ask our principals or Russ to do that with our PTA groups and our other, other advisory groups to make sure we're hearing from a vast variety of stakeholders. But by the end of September, Russ should have these strategic objectives pretty much in stone. And, and these represent the work of the district. So to point to trustee Mercer's point earlier, these strategic objectives are more administrative and they're, they're more flexible and they can change every three to five years. But basically, the strategic objectives are how we meet the goal areas. And remember, you adopted the goal areas. So there's a really clear division between what's a board-adopted issue and what's a, what's an administrative issue, if that helps at all. So for example, trustee Decker talked about the high school academies. And you can see under 1.03, prepare all students to be ready for the next level of their academic career. An initiative example is the academies at high school. And so we have a, an entire process on how to line those out and how to show you how, how those work. And you'll be able to look at those initiatives and get updated frequently from Russ. But the first step is just to make sure that you have a chance to see those strategic objectives and you're comfortable with, with Russ moving forward with those in the fall, because that's going to define his work in the fall. The last thing I'd say is we, we're still making changes to this. So under goal area number four, we realized we had, did not have a, and a strategic objective and related to family engagement. So we're going to add a 4.04 related to family engagement at our schools. So long story short, probably the best thing that the board could do between now and the 28th would be to read through those things in red and then, and then give us feedback. And, and I'd be happy to come back on the 28th. And Russ and I can kind of outline what, what our plan is for the fall with these strategic objectives. Last thing, I promise this is it. Paul, if you go down to the mega issues, which are... On page 110, right there, that's the other piece in red. So trustee Mercer talked about at the last meeting about having more work sessions. I think this list represents a pretty good start on things that we really need the board to get involved in at the board level in discussions. So for example, look at number five, providing equitable educational opportunities for all students in their neighborhood schools will continue to be an important topic of discussion in our community. That's the type of issue that could be a work session and a, and a board discussion. And I, I consider those mega issues. That's one of the... That's one of those things that was coined by Montana School Boards Association. These are issues of high importance to our district next year that could become work sessions during the year. So just additional work on the strategic plan. Chairperson, I'd leave it up to you, but I think probably the best thing we could do between now and the 28th is have you look through those and come back on the 28th with feedback for us.
I agree. Very, there's no parliamentary part in the work session, so. You want written feedback, just feedback?
Yeah, if you just be ready on the 28th to give us verbal feedback, we can take notes and go from there. And I'll have, we'll have a better updated version on the 28th too because we did get feedback from some other members of our district already. So we'll have a better updated version.
Well, and before we adjourn, and we have one last little recognition we want to do is to Dr. Watson. These are your flowers that you moved.
Thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate it. Those are beautiful.
Yeah, no, we just wanted to show our appreciation to you. And thank you, you will be missed. I know I will miss texting you at 3:00 a.m. I don't, I don't. Yeah, so that was just, we just wanted to show our appreciation.
Thank you. I appreciate the time that I've had here and looking forward to Russ's tenure. I think he's going to do a great job. And I think we're moving forward. So really appreciate the opportunity to represent all of you during a very interesting time, right? I spent two hours today, I don't know if you know this, but the county has hired a person to document our COVID experiences. And so I spent two hours today talking to a historian about the COVID experience in our district. And I was worried because I have all these COVID files and I'm like, what am I going to do with these? They're just going to kind of sit in a drawer and probably never be used. But he told me we could turn all of our district COVID files over to the library up at the university where they'll store all of it. So kind of cool.
All right, with that, we're adjourned, 10:12.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.